Sorry? Huh? One more minute before the selectmen is just finishing up one more thing. Good evening, Jeffrey. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order this special town meeting. It's November 12, 2019. The time now is 7:06 PM. We have a quorum present of 116 members at 7 o'clock on the dot. My tellers have been sworn tonight it will be Paul Armstrong covering the far right, Craig Dalton covering the far left, and Karen Joyce covering the center. The warrant having been previously declared properly noticed with the constable's return of service, as tradition dictates, we waive the reading of the warrant. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to ask William "Bill" Martin to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Ladies and gentlemen, while our color guard is coming down and Bill steps forward. Bill served his country in the Navy for over 30 years. He served in Ham's Way in Vietnam and in Desert Storm. When Bill retired, he was a captain. Bill has suffered from his patriotic duty, having been exposed to Agent Orange. Bill has had heart disease, cancer, and brain tumors, all the things he said to suffer. We are grateful as a country and as a town that Bill has armed such a strong will that he was able to serve the town of Kingston all these years as our veterans' agent. Bill refused to disclose to me all the awards and medals and commendations, and as I would say, that's so like Bill. So, Bill, if you would lead us, appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bill, if you can stay there for one moment, please. Everybody, please be seated. And I'm gonna sit this as well. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to take a few minutes. Bill Martin is a hero. Let me, I'm sorry, I'm gonna fill up about this. (laughter) I gotta pinch my hand. Let me just tell you a few things about this amazing, humble, and quiet man has undertaken in his lifetime. Bill and his wife Mary, whom I know a lot of you knew, chose to live in the town of Kingston. We almost lost them to Pembroke. While Bill served overseas, his wife Mary would send him swatches of wallpaper, furniture materials, everything, so that he could be part of choosing what was going to be in his home when he returned home from Ham's Way. Bill returned home in 1970, and he came home ready to fight the fight for all veterans. It's been a passion of his from the first day he stepped foot in Vietnam. Bill has fought that fight for veterans for over 49 years. He was tireless, he was kind, he was compassionate, and above all, he was respectful. Bill worked with many state, federal agencies, both private and public foundations, all to help veterans receive the benefits that they so rightfully deserved. If you remember, post-Vietnam, our veterans were not treated kindly. Bill ensured that every veteran that came home and came across his path received kindness and, above all, help. What many people do not know is that Bill always went above and beyond the call of duty. He would drive veterans to doctor's appointments. In Boston, he would ensure they were treated and that they received the medication that they so rightfully needed. Bill was known to go out in a snowstorm and shovel snow to help widows and veterans who were homebound. He would go grocery shopping, and he would just do about anything to help any of his veterans. Bill served as the town of Kingston's veteran agent for over 43 years. Almost all of those years, Bill refused to accept the stipend that was granted to him as a veterans' agent. Now, on top of all that service, Bill also served the town of Kingston in many other roles since 1976. Just to mention a few, Bill served on the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee member, Board of Assessors, Silver Lake Regional District Study Commission, Capital Outlay Committee. These are just a few. Bill certainly gave back to his town as he gave back to all of his veterans. Ladies and gentlemen, these young men who stand before you, they are our Boy Scout Troop 49. I'd like to ask Mary McKinnon to step forward to the podium to say a few words on behalf of the Boy Scouts of America.
Front and center, sir.[588.72][588.72](laughter) Come on down. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary McKinnon, and on behalf of Boy Scout Troop 49, I'm humbled to take a moment to recognize the retirement of Mr. Bill Martin. If any of you know Mr. Martin, you know his famous saying. Whenever I see Mr. Martin, I always say, "Good to see you, sir," and he always responds, "Good to be seen and not viewed." Over the past 10 years that I have known Mr. Martin, he has served as a vital resource for our local Boy Scout troops. Over the years, he has attended our troop meetings to teach these young men about honor, service to our country, service to our community, respect and recognition for our veterans, and proper treatment of our national flag. Mr. Martin has assisted many of our scouts with their Star, Life, and even Eagle-based projects. He has worked with our local troops on Memorial Day and Veterans' Day celebrations. He has mentored our scouts on the proper maintenance of our war memorials, replacing flags at the gravesites of our fallen heroes, and proper handling of our flags during our annual flag retirement ceremony. Mr. Martin, you have served as a role model and a mentor for our troop, and we are forever grateful. Nick? We are honored this evening to present you with the certificate of appreciation for your many, many years of dedicated service. On behalf of Troop 49 and all of our local scouts, we thank you for your military service and for your public service. Congratulations on your retirement, sir.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this time I'd like to ask our town clerk, I can't even get that out, Paul Gallagher, who has a presentation for Mr. Martin as well, to show a token of our appreciation for all of his service to the town of Kingston. This is known, I know it's heavy, this is known as the Veterans' Honor Rose. And we felt it was apropos for you to receive a Veterans' Honor Rose. Of course, it's in the season when it's supposed to be dormant, but it's about as good as it can get in November.[756.01][756.01](laughter) So, thank you, Paul. Thank you, Paul. We know how passionate you are about our veterans and particularly our missing in action. Ladies and gentlemen, I know you already have, but please rise and join me in thanking Bill for his service to our country, his 49 years of service for our veterans, his 43 years of service to the town of Kingston, and for leading us today. And you know my own passion about recognizing veterans, so...
I know.
So, Bill, I think you would like to make a couple of statements, and we would be honored to hear from you.
I'm wondering who that person was you were talking about. I don't see anything special that I did. Those of you who have been in the military, and those even the few who have not but who have been in large groups, you know that the leader often takes the fall if something goes wrong? And he gets applause if everything goes right. But he can't make either one of those things happen. He has to depend on his team, a team right behind him. Maybe he trained them, but his team. And I couldn't have done any of the things that you mentioned without my team. Chief among that is a veterans clerk, Ministry of Assistant, Priscilla Brackett.
Priscilla, come on in the room, please.
Priscilla has been by my side for 23 years. She's been more than that. She's told me when I have to get something done. She kept my nose to the grindstone when it needed. And she picked up and did things. Yours truly was recuperating from a heart bypass. And while that was happening, the state came out with a new program for 100% service-connected veterans and widows of service-connected veterans. We had a few, but I wasn't really paying a whole lot of attention at home to all of that until I checked in town and they said, "Oh, yeah, Priscilla has a list we already gave her tour." She only came to my house one time during that recuperation, and that was for me to sign her pay raise. She wouldn't come for anything else. I think, I think within 20 hours of being hired, she was down at, we printed A or wherever, and had a stamp made for my name, just to make sure she could take care of things. And that was good because we went away on vacation. Because of her, I was able to do it and not worry. And I think that's, that's important. So, all of the applause that you give to me really belongs with Priscilla because she's the one who did the work. I just, I was just the front face, as it were. Some of you mentioned that you enjoyed the dinner yesterday for veterans. That is wholly an action that she undertook. She and the Assistant Director of the Counsel and Agent, between them, they've done this for several years. They don't ask me, they don't say to me, "We're doing this." They have it all set up, and then I get told, "You have to be here at this time." And that's, that's fine. That's the way it is. I learned one thing, and you all have seen that happen at one time or another in your life. You give a job to a strong person who knows what they're doing, and you get out of their way while they do it. And that's really what I want to say. That lady is the one who's wholly responsible for all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Troop 49, thank you so much for coming and being a part of this.
Hey, guys, guys, hey, can someone take the rose and follow him?
Oh, there you go. Put it in Bill's car. Get his keys, thanks. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, before I move on to the rules of the meeting, I'd just like to make one further announcement. Sorry. I'm gonna take a minute to announce that I won't be running for reelection this coming spring. Sorry, it's been an emotional night. I wanted to give any candidates interested a time to consider running as our moderator. I had a significant accident this year that made me reflect upon where and how I expend my free time and talents. I'm truly saddened, as you can tell, not to continue to serve as this town of Kingston, which is my hometown, as moderator. I have served for 10 years and greatly enjoyed being here and offering my time to the town of Kingston. I do look forward to being on that side. Look forward to being able to vote my vote and to have my voice heard as well. I want to pass on the wise words of one of our longstanding moderators, Larry Winnicott, who advised all future moderators as follows. Be patient, be fair, be honest, and screw protect the minority. That is really what the function of a moderator is. I reflected on his words before every town meeting. They truly are wise words, and I hope that all future moderators will follow them. Since this is likely my last town meeting, unless the Board of Selectmen call one for February, I want to thank the town clerk, who has served with me, both Mary Lou Marzini and Paul Gallagher, Town Council Jay Tallerman, who's been here with me the entire time. It's been a pleasure to share this table with you, gentlemen. I want to thank all the Finance Committee members for their diligent work. I want to thank all the tellers, Paul Armstrong, David Pepe, Paul Basler, tonight Karen Joyce, and Craig Dalton, and all others who have filled that role over the years. They've been valuable to me. I want to thank all the checkers and the town clerk's office staff, without whom this town meeting could not even happen. I thank all of you for allowing me the honor to serve in this position. Lastly, I want to thank all the citizens and voters who come to town meeting and participate because without you, there would be no town meeting, and this is so incredibly important. So, now, we can move on to the rules of the meeting. Time is 7:21. Town meeting is run per town meeting time, as Kingston bylaws dictate. If you wish to address town meeting, please raise your hand or step to the microphones. You all know where they are. Wait to be recognized, then step up to the microphone, and please remember to state your name and your address. During debates on articles, keep comments focused on the articles and do not make things personal. Let's remember to respect each other. Only one person can speak at a time. If you have a point of order, you need to raise a question. Is the speaker entitled to the floor? Is what the speaker is saying, proposing, irrelevant, illegal, frivolous, contrary to procedure? Is pending action frivolous, irrelevant, illegal, or contrary to procedure? These are not seconded, nor debated, amended, or now not reconsidered anyhow. These are moderator's sole discretion. If you have a question of privilege, raising an issue of your rights and your privilege to attend this meeting, meaning your safety, your dignity, integrity, volume, temperature, noise, interference with your ability to be heard, speak, or participate, please raise a question of privilege. There's been discussion recently about people feeling intimidated, and as I've said many times, everyone has the right to vote. Nobody should ever question anybody's vote. And do not confront or intimidate voters. That certainly is contrary to all town meeting nature. If you have a motion to amend, you can make the motion, but then you must put it in writing. It cannot be debated until it's in writing, and we will place the article on the table if we need to and move on until the motion to amend is in writing. We no longer have motions to reconsider, so I can now actually strike that section. If you motion to call the question, Mr. Creed. If you feel the debate has gone on long enough, please go to the microphone. You cannot debate. You must ask to move the question. And I ask that the doorways be left open for safety reasons, and again, in discussions of civility, it's okay to disagree with people. It's part of human nature, but it's not okay to disrespect anybody. Debating the issue is a cornerstone of our government and a wonderful right of all voters. Expect everyone to follow these rules and be respectful. I'm gonna stick to the time limits of two minutes and twice at the microphone. So, I think if those are our, all our rules have been covered, then we will go back, and I would ask the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Josh Warren, to get up and make the opening motion regarding non-residence attendance at an ability to address this special town meeting. We need to open the motion first. Sorry, let me just take the opening motion to actually open town meeting. Then you can do a point of order. Mr. Warren?
Move that the following non-residents and non-registered voters be allowed to enter and address the town meeting. Jason R. Tallerman, Town Council; Kate Federoff, Town Council; Matthew Darsh, Water Department Superintendent; Jason Silva, Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer; Tina Callisto Betty, Human Resources Manager; Arthur Boyle, Health Agent; Mary Guiney, Conservation Agent; Carol McCoy, Town Accountant; Robert Downey, Town Planner; C.S. Stewart, Library Director; Paula Rossi-Klap, Counsel on Aging Director; Robert Betters, Attorney, Saxon Partners; Don Smith, Attorney for Saxon Partners; Robert Mitchell, Planning Consultant; Joel Bard, K.P. Law; Dan Pallotta, Chairman, Plymouth County Commissioners; Mike Oll, Comprehensive Environmental; and that, and further, that all articles read in order as appear in the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Here in a second. On that, ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I believe, did I have a point of order? Ms. Sherman? I apologize, I just wanted to open the town meeting first.
That's all right. I'm sorry. I have a couple of questions regarding the meeting here. And so, through the moderator, I would like to ask the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, was this special town meeting necessary? Isn't it true that these articles could have waited to town meeting? Fincom, I'd like to hear your response to this too, if you care to. To the clerk, I'd like to know how much approximately this town meeting cost, this special, I apologize, special town meeting, cost? So, those are my questions.
The whole meeting, the meeting's here, yeah. Do you want to answer? Good. Okay, then why don't we do mine?
Sure.
So, I don't know, is this on?
Yeah.
We just talked about it a little bit here. Those concerns, while completely legitimate concerns, don't relate to a parliamentary rule of order. To the extent that you have a concern on any particular article as to why its timing is as such, then you should bring that up when the article is called. But those aren't points of order that are recognized generally under how town meeting time is processed.
I think one of the things that council's getting to is, in town meeting, that's what I was just looking for, is the Board of Selectmen have a right to call a town meeting. So, once they call a town meeting and set the warrant article, then town meeting has to happen. So, it is the Board of Selectmen's choice to call town meeting, unless petitioners, and then they have to call town meeting if, if private petitioners move for articles to be heard before the annuals. So, I think that's what council's saying. I understand what you're saying in regard to, and that might be an open forum question, in regard to why this town meeting was called as opposed to others, and what the cost is. I think...
Can you speak to the cost?
But, so...
Yeah, you know, honestly, I don't have it offhand. I'm gonna assume it's somewhere about $7,000.
Okay.
That, that, and that's kind of an estimate to include...
So, one thing just to answer for here is somewhere in the ballpark of $7,000.
Excuse me?
Somewhere in the ballpark of $7,000 for a special town meeting as opposed to an annual.
Thank you.
Article one, Ms. Fury.
Move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $19,581.48 from free cash to fund the agreement by the by in between the town of Kingston and the Kingston Police Lieutenants for FY '20 to the following accounts. Police Department, 01210-51125. Lieutenant's contracted salary, $17,604. Police Department, 01210-51131. Overtime, $1,977.48.
Hearing a second on that, ladies and gentlemen, we have Board of Selectmen favorable 400. We have Finance Committee favorable 401. Ms. Fury?
Tonight, you'll see us referring to the supplemental document. I hope you all have one. If not, they're in the back of the auditorium. As, there's a little bit more detail in the supplemental because the warrant is just that, a warrant. And for the lieutenants, you'll see that basically, before we started negotiations, the lieutenants were seventh out of eight surrounding communities. Once we were done with negotiations, they are now the fifth out of eight in surrounding communities. We arrived at that new ranking by giving them a base pay increase of $2,200, 2% for three, each of the three years, a new senior step, and training stipend increased along with longevity. So, that, again, they went from number seven out of eight to five out of eight in surrounding communities. And as the document says, our goal has been to try to get the staff up to as close to average as we can, and that's what we've done with the police, as we've done with all the other unions before this.
Any further? Nope? Okay. So, I just wasn't sure. You were moving papers, so I thought you were turning a page. Mr. Bonsek?
Yeah, Peter Bonsek, Temple Air Drive. I'd just like to say a personal note first. You know, I come out here for the last 12 years, and I try to do what I do about making things fair for the town, but I've always had respect, whether I care for you to be a Selectman or not, I had respect for you. And for me, showing respect back to the town as a leader, you don't walk in here looking like you just came off the street.
Are you gonna, I know, Peter, you need to get to the article. Are you gonna, I know, Peter, you need to get to the article.
All right, I just, I asked for a personal time. Okay, thank you. I have no problem with this here, but I'd like to find, I find the information is inaccurate where it's actually not 2% the first year, it's like 6.5%. Can I ask a question from FinCom if I am correct or not?
I can answer that question.
Well, I think if he wants to hear from, yeah, if he wants to hear from FinCom, then call.
When the Finance Committee looks at something like this, we look at the total cost to the town. As Elaine just said, the base pay was increased 2,000-plus, the training was increased, and the longevity. So, when we put that $3,200 or thereabouts, along with the 2%, that's how we believe that a more, more accurate percentage increase for the first year is the 6.5%.
Thank you.
Thank you. One second, sorry, folks, I just lost that. Ms. Fury, if you want to address how the Board of Selectmen calculated the 2%, I'm asking for that.
Well, it's simple. The base pay was increased, the amount, the 22, $2,200, and then 2% was added to that. So, yes.
So, the base was increased and then the 2%?
So, that would be more than 2% increase in one year, just how you interpret it for the first year.
Okay. Mr. Fons?
John Michael Fons, 16 May Avenue. I want to preface my question with, I understand that we're focusing on one article and we're not to speak to other articles as we're on Article One. However, as a voter, I do feel that it's important to look at the whole picture of what we're looking at at this special town meeting. So, my question is, is there a reason why we're doing, when we're making a comparison list of surrounding towns for the lieutenants' contract, there are certain towns that are on that list by comparison? And then when you look at the next article, which is looking at the sergeant's contract, the list that was compiled as comparison surrounding towns, in fact, has four towns on it that are different than the ones that are on this list. In other words, when we're looking at the lieutenants, we compared ourselves to a certain set of towns, and then when we looked at the sergeants, the list that we compared ourselves to is not the same list. Is there a reason for that?
Ms. Fury, can you address that?
As far as lieutenants' contracts are concerned, structures in every town is different. Some police organizations have a chief, a deputy chief, a lieutenant, a deputy lieutenant. There's different ranks, and we try to get the lieutenants to match those towns that have like responsibilities for like titles. It was not easy because most, a good portion of the towns have deputy, what, deputy lieutenants, for lack of a better word, that is a rank higher than our own lieutenants, but they're doing the same responsibility as a deputy. So, it depends on the ranks within each town or which towns are utilized. So, lieutenants are not, you know, ranked exactly the same way in each town. We tried to do the best we could with the rankings.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Fons?
Sorry, through Madam Moderator, perhaps you could clarify. My understanding was that when we're comparing ourselves to surrounding towns, my understanding was that we weren't comparing necessarily the hierarchy or the structure of the police departments, but rather the makeup of the town as a whole. Is that incorrect?
Because you need, if you're looking for comparisons, you're looking for like responsibilities, like jobs, like duties in surrounding towns.
My understanding was that we were comparing, like, the town itself in terms of, like, per capita income, the median income, the median home value, like, to see how, like, population size. We're not looking at those statistics for the town when we're comparing?
I get what you're saying, Mr. Fons. Ms. Fury, I guess what the question would be is, is that, just to jump in, is, did the Board of Selectmen take into consideration, you know, geographic number of citizens, you know, that kind of thing?
Yeah, generally speaking, yes.
In general. And then what she's saying is, is that if you have somebody that's called a captain on a department, I don't know if the captain's above lieutenant, I think it is, but if you have a captain that's doing a job, but then you have our lieutenants that are doing the same thing that a captain's doing in another town, you can't compare lieutenants in our town to lieutenants in another town that aren't doing the same thing. I think that's what she's indicating in regard to, it has to be like performances as well as geographic size. Is that correct, Ms. Fury?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
So, I mean, that's what she was getting at, I think, just so that you understand.
Okay. Thank you.
John Creed for Bayberry Lane, Kingston. I move the question.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have a move the question, that being seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with minimal opposition. Ladies and gentlemen, motion on Article One. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with minimal opposition. Moving on to Article Two, that's you, Ms. Fury?
Yes. Move that the town vote to transfer $161,094.89 from free cash to fund the agreement by in between the town of Kingston and the Kingston Superior Officers Association Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 30 for FY '18 through FY '20. Police Department, 01210-51120. Mass Carp Sergeant Union, $123,798.34. Police Department, 01210-51131. Overtime, $37,296.55.
That being seconded, ladies and gentlemen, we have Board of Selectmen favorable 400. Finance Committee favorable 401. Ms. Fury, please address your motion.
This follows the same, the same thought process as the first article, along with all the other unions. We tried to get the sergeants up to an average. To achieve that, again, they were ranked seventh out of eight in communities. We got them up to fifth out of eight, and we accomplished that by giving them a base pay increase of $3,250 the first year. On top of that, we added a 1.5% increase, and then the remaining two years was 2%, 2%. Uniform allowance, the training stipend, part-time stipends, and an adjustment in full-time specialty assignments.
Thank you, Ms. Fury. Mr. Bonsek?
Peter Bonsek, 10 Blair Drive. Curious, when was this contract up? And are we going to be doing another one for FY '21?
Yes, this is, this is for the past, current year and the past two years.
All right, can I just ask why we've waited three years to settle this contract? My thinking is that, you know, had we known the prior years, we all know they're going to get a raise, that why isn't it so, why wasn't it settled so at least we can put it in the budget prior to, instead of coming up with an extra 150-something thousand, 60-something thousand dollars this year? Why did it take so long to settle this contract?
Because there were negotiations back and forth between both parties.
Three years? That was a question, three years?
Well, it expired three years ago, yes, and it's in, it's, negotiations have been going on for the past, past few years, yes.
Sounds like nobody's doing their job.
Mr. Bonsek. Seeing no further debate, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with minimal opposition. Yes, Mr. Fons, point of.
Don't know where it came from, but someone in the audience was yelling out, "Sit down", to Mr. Bonsek. Don't have to agree with what he says, but I think we all have a right to speak if we want to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fons. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll control the room. We don't need anarchy. Article Three, Ms. Fury.
Move that the town appropriate the sum of $3,497.5 for the purpose of paying outstanding bills from various town departments, and to meet this appropriation, the following sums be transferred as follows. Board of Health, Envertrack Labs, Grays Beach Sampling, $70, free cash. Recreation Department, Conoka, Conica, Minolta, Copier Service, $63.40, free cash. Board of Health, VNA, Cape Cod, $451.25, free cash. Police Department, Town Police Details, $1,339.20, free cash. Information Technology, Library Phones Network, $1,005.50, free cash. Zoning Board of Appeals, Public Hearing Advertisements, $210.40, free cash. Solid Waste, Oil Removal at Transfer Station, $160, free cash. Water Department, Electric Fence Repair, $109 from the Water Enterprise Fund, retained earnings. Said expenditures to be under the direction of the respective departments, and further that the town accountant be authorized to allocate such sums.
Having a second on that, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Selectmen voted favorable 400, and Finance Committee voted favorable 500. Ms. Fury?
These are bills that came in after year-end closing, and there wasn't alternative money to fund these particular bills.
Seeing no debate, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with minimal opposition. Moving on to Article Four, Ms. Kramer.
To move that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $25,000 to supplement the appropriations to the fiscal year 2020 operating budget to the following accounts, and to authorize the town accountant to allocate such sums to the appropriate operating budgets. Account 0154351112. Wage personnel salaries, veterans, amount of $25,000.
Having a second on that, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Selectmen voted favorable 500. Finance Committee voted unfavorable 050.
Is it 500 or 400?
050?
Selectmen?
It was 400.
400 or 500? 400?
Yeah. It's on the new printout, too. Ms. Kramer?
As we talked about in the opening ceremony and service before the town meeting opened, we have had the wonderful blessing of Bill Martin serving as Veterans Agent for longer than I've actually been alive, and we are a town that has always done so much to serve our veterans. We have 700 veterans in the town of Kingston, and Mr. Martin, for a long time, was taking no stipend. He start, he started out in this town when the population was far below 12,000, and now when he retires, we're closer to 14,000. The state mandates that we, once our population hits the threshold of 12,000, either have a full-time Veterans Agent, or we join a regionalization Veterans Service District. We are not here today to decide what path we're going to take forward. What we are here to do is figure out a stopgap so that our veterans are served in lieu of his retirement that we didn't anticipate. So, this $25,000 might be used to hire a contractor until we can get to a point where we figure out what we're going to do, or it could be to up the hours that Priscilla Brackett is currently working, but we want to make sure that our veterans are served. If we do not meet the state mandates as far as having either the full-time Veterans Agent or the regionalization in the service district, we risk losing 75% reimbursement that we're currently getting on the direct benefits that we provide to our veterans. Currently, there's $300,000 that's budgeted that goes directly into the hands of veterans in need, and out of our 700 veterans, only 28 cases are receiving reimbursements right now, and those people are very much in need, and we need further, we need to be able to have, be able to serve the people that aren't being, currently receiving benefits, and we need to make sure that there's no issues as far as the state taking back the funds that are due to us as reimbursement.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Sorry. Mr. Fons?
Yes, I'd just like to inquire of the Finance Committee if they are inclined to do so, if they could explain why the entire committee voted against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fons. Mr. Pike?
I'd say there were three reasons. Number one, the, this was presented to us as strictly a way of funding a full-time Veterans Agent. We weren't told that it could be a possibility of doing a contract, or sharing, or whatever. Number two, we were concerned that there is no full-time position in the wage and personnel bylaw, so that there's no real way for the town to do this at this time. And number three, we challenged the town to find the way of funding it through other vehicles, other accounts within the accounting system.
Thank you, Mr. Pike. Mrs. Hollow? Sorry, I just blanked on your name. I apologize.
Good evening. Dorothy Pat Hollow, 3 Publin, Kingston, Massachusetts. In addition to what Mr. Pike had said, there are a couple.
Can barely hear you. You might want to just move a little closer, sorry.
How's this?
Better, much better, thank you.
I like to be heard. So, anyhow, there are, there are three things that kind of convoluted here. One, the money has already been set aside to pay for the rest of the year up until July, I may to understand. Secondly, there is no job description yet. So, that has to be decided upon, and then having that decision made, then, I guess, it goes before another board to determine how much money the new Veterans Affairs Agent will be receiving. So, that will take quite a bit of time, probably up to the May period of our town meeting. So, I would like to suggest that we postpone this vote until that time because it doesn't seem to be any need to put money in the bank right now. Regarding what Ms. Kramer had said, it's true, 75% of what we've given. The question is, how much have we given this year? And when does that year end? Is it a fiscal year that ends in July? So, there should be some recompense. Also, you had mentioned at the BOS meeting that if you are in good faith, then you could be looked at, the town could be looked at differently. So, if it's shown that there's no job description, there is no agreement if this person will be union, funds haven't been decided upon yet, and yet you have money to pay up until July, and you are working very diligently to secure an agent within a very tight framework, and I think that the state would look very favorably upon your efforts to try to replace someone like Mr. Martin. Thank you.
Ms. Hollow, I have two questions. One, I just want to draw your attention to the supplemental documentation. I want to confirm that with Ms. Kramer. That 20, it's saying here that $25,000 will be requested to supplement the Veterans Service Office, which I assume is actually Priscilla, until a full-time position can be recommended at the spring annual meeting. So, is it the intent of the Board of Selectmen that that money would be used to pay into the office staff until we get to the wage and personnel amendment changes?
Yes, there is no full-time position currently in wage and personnel, and Mr. Martin was working part-time, grandfathered in. Now that he's no longer there, we do need to start working towards filling that mandate, and two ways we could do it now is to put more money into that office so that Priscilla could potentially increase her hours, or if we need to have a contract person in short term until we can figure out how to proceed. No full-time position is going to be filled until that full-time position is created, until or if that full-time position is created and voted upon at town meeting. And in order to show good faith to the Commonwealth that we intend to stay with the mandate and also to serve our veterans, who, although Mr. Martin was part-time, he was a million men at once. Like, he did so much for people in his free time, and he deserves to be able to step back and retire. We need to make sure that there's no holes in the service we're providing to our veterans.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Ms. Hollow, I also want to come back to you, from what I heard, asking if you're making a motion to postpone the article.
Yes.
Okay, so, moving on that one then, that motion having been made by Ms. Hollow, motion to postpone, do I have a second on that?
Second.
That being seconded. Ladies and gentlemen, the motion to postpone is a debatable motion, so Ms. Hollow, if you'd like to address your motion. I think you already did. You want it postponed, you want to give it up a time to get to May in order to get to the annual town meeting, have it more vetted. I mean, I'm just summarizing, is that about?
And even on this, to have it much more succinct, that Priscilla may have been involved in this process too. I don't know Priscilla, but I hear she's fabulous. But I don't see that, per se, here, how that money will be used for Priscilla or anyone else. So, I think there are clarity is certainly necessary, and I think that there's a time process that has to be completed as well.
Thank you, Ms. Hollow. One second. That's what they're. If I get this correct, you're proposing twofold. Some, is Priscilla part-time employee?
I'm just saying that we need to-
Yes, okay, thank you. So Priscilla's part-time. So the intent of the Board of Selectmen in this motion or this article is to supplement Priscilla potentially to a full-time position so she can undertake part of the duties that Bill did or bring in a contract person to undertake the duties that Bill did?
Yes, there is no-
Okay. So those are the two potential options under the article. I just want people to understand what they're voting on and what that's about. So those are the two proposal. So in opposition to the motion to postpone, Ms. Kramer?
So at the time that we budgeted this year, we had, all that we knew is that we had a wonderful Veterans Agent in Mr. Martin and he was at a small stipend of $14,000 a year. Given what we know now with his retirement that happened last Friday, things have changed and in order to show the state our intentions of staying in compliance, we are no longer grandfathered in for part-time. I strongly recommend that people do not push this off because I feel that it would signal that we don't have the intent necessarily of following the mandate in one way or another. That being said, I respect what Mrs. Hollow is saying as far as having it go through the proper process and making sure before any decision permanently is made, if we're going to get a full-time agent, I want to see additional benefits and additional services to our veterans. I want to not, it shouldn't just be a mandate, yes, it's mandated, but I also want to be able to have with that additional bandwidth, additional services. There's a lot that has to happen and a lot of a thoughtful process that we have to go to before we get there, but what this article is asking, the original article, is just to have a stopgap in place so that we can serve our veterans to the best of what they're entitled to. So please recommend-
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, I just don't want people to-
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Kramer. If you may, Ms. Hollow, allow Mr. Bonsek behind you to speak first and then, Mr. Bonsek?
What are we speaking on right now?
Motion to postpone.
I'm sorry?
Do you want to address the motion to postpone?
Ah, yes, yes.
Okay.
I agree with Mrs. Hollow that I think we should wait until there is a wage and personnel bylaw with a description. I don't know, understand why we have to show an intent to the state that we need to have this because it's a simple, to me, it's a very simple thing to write a letter saying that we do not have a bylaw through the wage and personnel and we are intending to. I don't believe we're going to lose anything if, you know, it's a simple letter, it should be a simple item to do. So, but until such time, we do have a wage and personnel description in the bylaws, I think we need to hold off on this. I think if we're going to increase the hours of the person, I forget your name, I'm sorry, the person who's been working there for a long time, I do appreciate all the work that you have done with Mr. Martin, that I'm sure you could find another account to pay her through. A lot of these things are being paid through free cash, I don't know if you could do that, but it sounds like something we should do and hold off until the annual town meeting in May. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsek. Is that you, Mr. Randall?
Should be.
I said, "Thank you, Mr. Bonsek."
Oh, thank you.
I just was wondering, is that Mr. Randall? I can't tell by the hat.
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Dennis Randall, 39 Winter Street. Addressing the motion to postpone, first of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen for being proactive and too often, we tend to put services to veterans at the bottom of the list. We'll get around to it sometime. This is out of the gate. Yesterday was Veterans Day. Today, we honor our Veterans Agent who gave us such great service. Now we have an opportunity to send a message to every veteran in town and future veterans, because kids are watching this too, that we're not going to put you last. We're going to be proactive. We know the need, we trust the town, we trust our officials, we trust our board to represent our veterans and our interests as taxpayers equally. I urge this Assembly not to postpone and take affirmative action on the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Any further debate? Ladies and gentlemen, on the motion to postpone only, this is a majority vote, so on the motion to postpone, all those in favor to postpone, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion does not carry with a voice count. Is it how you say it?
Majority voice vote.
Majority voice vote. No, it's a majority voice count. Right?
No. Well, they can count them.
Right, I didn't count them, right? So it's a majority? No, right. It's from a voice vote, that's what it's, yeah. Okay, you're right. He's right. Voice vote. So back on to the article as it now stands, Article Four. Any further debate on Article Four? Seeing what, Ms. Kramer?
Nope.
Okay.
Russ Boydlo, 14 Warflane.
What was your last name, sir? Sorry.
Boydlo. B-O-I-D-L-E-A-U. Boydlo.
Oh, thank you.
Who is going to determine, who's going to fill this new position?
Well, I think there's twofold under the article. Part is to increase the hours for Priscilla who's currently working as the office staff and then the second would be if they hire contract help. So Ms. Kramer, if you could address who would be the hirer of the, of contract help if so hired?
We have not gotten to that point yet. All we know is that there is going to be a fallback in what we can provide our veterans because we are losing our Veterans Agent and I don't want to have to wait and see what we do to figure out like what's going to happen before we know we have the funds in place to serve our veterans and that we do not lose the reimbursements we get from the state. So I can't answer your question as to who that's going to be because we haven't even had, we haven't even posted any type of, any posting for it or attached to Priscilla at great amount of depth about what her role could or should be, but we need to be able to fund this mandate.
But his question was who would do the hiring, under the law, the Board of-
Oh, I thought you meant who would we be-
No, 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 not who you would hire, who would be the hirers. The hirer.
It would be a contract.
Hirer. It is the Board of Selectmen who has the authority to hire.
So they will-
It's only the Board of Selectmen.
It'll be an appointed position?
It would be a contract.
Contract position, correct.
Until we could figure out a bylaw if we want to go in that direction, to have a wage and personnel full-time position.
Right.
Or if you want to examine other options to stay within the state mandate.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Mr. Boydlo?
And have we determined what the qualifications of this position will be?
We do not have-
If they're qualified, in other words, when we find someone who is supposedly going to take this position, will we have certain qualifications that this person will have to have in order to fill the position?
One second, just so that we're very clear, the question you're asking is about this contract help, not a future Veterans Agents under wage and personnel. You're talking about authorized by this article. So under this article, who would authorize, under this contract help, has the Board of Selectmen set any designation or description for the criteria to hire someone?
We have not. I would like to say to that point though, that we do have a rock star in Priscilla. She's an amazing assistant to the Veterans Agent, but she is not a veteran herself so she cannot be the person that fills this mandate for the Veterans Agent that we need. So even if we were to take her on for more hours, that's, we need to have a veteran serving as Veterans Agent.
So you are representing to this board that the, even though that's the requirement of a Veterans Agent under the wage and personnel and under the state, that if this contract help would be a veteran, that'd be one criteria that you're saying the Board of Selectmen would hire? Would be one criteria?
We haven't completely discussed that yet.
Okay, but that's what you just said when you said Priscilla's not a veteran so she can't do the job.
I'm saying as far as being that until-
Okay. In the full-time, okay.
Yep.
So there's no criteria set?
Okay, will the, the people of the town be able to participate in that qualification process?
It would go, are we talking about this contract person?
Right.
Because the full, if there is a full-time person that will go through wage and personnel, that's not through the Board of Selectmen, but all of our meetings are open to the public and we are always open to feedback and, I mean, to the extent that that is the process, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. And Mr. Boydlo.
New question.
One second. Yes, Mr. Bonsek?
Peter Bonsek, 10 Blade Drive. With this will be a contract position, does it have the same restrictions if a person was an elected official or appointed official for the town, that they have to wait six months to be hired by the town? Will that have the same restrictions if it's a contract versus town employee?
We have not committed to having a contract position yet, but if that is the case, all of the positions would still be within the bylaws, so if that is a requirement, yes, that would be for that. So again, there's just a couple different paths we could take.
I just want to clarify that, thank you.
So Ms. Kramer, you're saying that this contract person, there are descriptions because you're going to use the description for the current Veterans Agent as the description you'll apply to this contract agent?
I know that we have to fill, like this intermediate period.
Speak into the mic, please, I can hear you.
I'm sorry. There hasn't been a real deep discussion on what the qualifications would be for this. We know our couple options could be to expand Priscilla's hours or to possibly hire a contract person. That's what I can tell you for that, I guess I'm not going to-
Okay, yeah, you can just look forward, don't look at me. I know that's hard to do, but especially when I'm talking to you. I think the question comes into play is that people are looking for whether or not there's been a description or criteria and I just, I want to make sure that I didn't hear you incorrectly. I thought I just heard you say that whomever the Board of Selectmen considers to hire under this contract. Now, the contract position, not the Veterans Agent, contract, you would use the criteria from the Veterans Agent's description in the wage and personnel. That's not what you said?
We do not have a wage and personnel description yet, so, but we would be in line with what we hope.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Again, the contract, and I don't believe it's a town bylaw, I believe it's a state law, that if you're either an elected official or appointed official for the town, you have to be, have to no longer hold a position for six months before you can be employed by the town. So as an, if it was an employee position, that person could not be hired until six months after he resigned from a board. But if it's a contracted position, does it still have the same restrictions?
Okay. Mr. Bonsek, if I can have Town Council approach, address that, just it might clarify the issue in regard to what the Board of Selectmen's duties would be in this situation?
There are different ethics laws that apply to appointed-
I can't hear, I'm sorry.
There are different ethics laws that apply to appointed and elected officials regardless, and I'm not going to get into hypotheticals because there is no position on the table. No matter what it is, the Board of Selectmen will follow and adhere to all ethics laws when it comes to this.
And can I ask one question? And that is as to this contract person as well?
A contract employee is still an employee. It's not a vendor, it's a contract employee.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Okay, sorry about the, that.
Ms. Sherman?
Sherman, yeah.
Well, back to my original point, which was, is this a necessary town meeting? This seems like a slush fund issue and it's not disparaging, we definitely need to do something with the veterans and I am all for that, believe me, 100%, but this is not an article for this town meeting, in my opinion. I think the FinCom was smart enough to know that and I think that we should be looking at it. We're not prepared. You don't even know what we're doing. I mean, it's, it's very evident that we are not prepared on this.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman.
We know-
Ms. Kramer, there was no question to you. Ma'am?
111 South Street. I move the question.
I have moved the question. Second on that, ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion to move the question carries with minimal opposition. On the main article, Article Four, ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Ladies and gentlemen, on a majority vote, motion carries with a voice vote.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Creed.
A question and then I would like to move reconsideration of Articles One-
You, I know you had mentioned that you weren't at the last town meeting, but reconsideration has been abolished by the town of Kingston. There's no longer reconsideration.
Okay.
It's gone.
All right.
So no need to lock in votes.
I was trying to speed the operation.
I appreciate it. Article Five. And that is, I guess it's Mr. Warren?
Move, move that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $10,000 to supplement and/or subsidize the appropriations from the, to the FY 2020 Renewable Energy Enterprise Fund established.
You can't hear him?
No.
Sorry, maybe move the microphone up a little bit, just because you're taller. There you go. Try again.
Okay, how's that?
Thank you.
Move that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $10,000 to supplement and/or subsidize the appropriations to the FY 2020 Renewable Energy Enterprise Fund established under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53, F and a half, and to authorize the town accountant to allocate such sums to the appropriate budget.
You need to read that, right? Are we reading it?
Oh, sorry. Description, electricity, $10,000.
Having a second on that, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Selectmen have a favorable vote 4-0-0. Finance Committee has a favorable vote 5-0-0. Mr. Warren, you want to address your article?
Sure. So as I'm sure everybody in this room knows, the KWI turbine has not been turning, it has not been producing the revenue that it once did. Those funds used to come to the town and one of the, one of the monthly items that happened when all of that was going on and while that was producing, was the town would receive an electric bill, would send it to KWI or would take the money to pay that electric bill out of what was generated. With that turbine not producing, we've now started to incur those electric costs. We've been working to try to either get the turbine off the grid so that it's not incurring these fees and we've also been working to, to make sure that KWI is the one paying these bills so that it no longer comes to the town. So this article allocates funding to subsidize that. It's an unanticipated shortfall, these electric bills need to be paid, so we're asking for the funds to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Fonz?
Yes, do we know what the approximate cost per month is?
I believe it's around $1,100.
So this basically would cover about 10 months approximately.
As I said, we're working on a few different strategies so that we are no longer incurring that. This would get us through to the point where we're no longer incurring those bills.
Do we know how much we've already accrued in terms, like accumulated in terms of debt on that?
$1,100.
So one month?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Fonz. Mr. Bonsek?
Peter Bonsek, 10 Blade Drive. Is there a way, are we going to be recouped, the money that we're spending on this? Because I assume after seven years of having that turbine up, that we should have had a bond placed on there for, just in case for this exactly what's happening now. Is there in fact a bond on this turbine?
Sure, I'll let Jay answer questions pertaining to that.
Is there a bond on the-
Peter, there's not a bond that would apply for these purposes, but suffice to say, without getting into all the particulars of what's ongoing legal strategy regarding KWI, there has been significant concern over the years over their non-compliance with the requirements of the planning board, including funding a decommissioning security, which is money that would be needed to take the turbine down. We are working with KWI to pursue, they've said that they are going to decommission. Beyond that, it's an ongoing process and we're employing all things that we can without expending significant resources of the town to put this behind us.
Question, is there a bond for the decommissioning? Was there a bond at the beginning, you know, when you have a project, you get a bond for decommissioning?
They were under an obligation to fund a bond that over time, and that's not atypical for early operations, they start to fund later. One of their areas of non-compliance relates to the funding of that decommissioning. They are still responsible by contract and we're, we're pursuing how they might do that voluntarily, which they suggested they're going to do.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bonsek.
So it is within the contract, because I read the contract many years ago, saying that it's supposed to have a bond on it even before it went into service. So in other words, seven years of there, nobody's ever looked at getting a bond for this thing for decommissioning it, which looks like it might wind up in, and that And that could be the cost of the town, correct?
I don't agree with the facts as you, as you state them, but regardless, we're working to resolve this without the town incurring any financial liability. It's an ongoing process. I really can't comment on it further. But the Selectmen have been working hard, as has Tom, to try and bring this all to an end in as swift and cheap a fashion as possible.
All right, thank you. If I could ask the Board of Selectmen if they could somehow put on the town website an update as this goes along, so the residents will understand that if we don't get a bond, that it will be our responsibility to pay to take it down, or at least keep us up to date with what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsek. Seeing no further debate, ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor of Article Five, say aye. All those opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, motion carries with minimal opposition. Article Six, that would be capital planning, Mr. Cronin. I mean Randall. Why did I call you Cronin? He's going to make a motion to break him out, to me. Yep.
Do I have to make a motion to break him out? That's our preference. Absolutely.
Yeah, so just do it right now.
Okay, make a motion to consider each different project individually with the knowledge that we are not moving Project Number Two.
All right, that's actually, you guys don't do it, that's a moderator motion. So thank you, Mr. Randall. I will accept that. We're going to break Article Six into two motions, if you would proceed on the motion on Project One.
Or three motions, I believe.
Oh, three, I'm sorry. You just said Article. You said Two's not going to be moved?
Project Two will not be moved.
I know, but I only have these now. They've been, my motion's amended, so your motion's amended, right?
Uh, yes.
You're going to move IT, Recreation, and Fire?
Yes.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, mine have been renumbered, so I've got One, Two, and Three. One is IT, Two is Recreation, Three is Fire. So that's how we'll do it. So breaking into three sub-motions, please move Project One.
Move that the sum of $15,000 be appropriated for the following capital expenditure, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of $15,000 be transferred from free cash, set expenditures to be the direction, under the direction of the department named below, IT Department, for the purchase of Microsoft licenses.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have a second on that. Having a second on that. Ladies and gentlemen, Board of Selectmen is favorable for, sorry, 4-0-0. Finance Committee is favorable 5-0-0, and Capital Planning is favorable 3-0-0 as to the 15,000. Mr. Randall?
Yep, this is basically to upgrade the licensing for 100 computers in the town. Windows 7 is reaching the end of its support on January 14, 2020. There are 100 computers at a unit price of $147.69. Comes out to $14,700, and the last two numbers got cut off in my printer. However, we've moved that 15,000 be appropriated just to cover all the costs and any unforeseen expenses.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Any debate? Seeing none, ladies and gentlemen, on Motion One, Project One of Article Six, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with minimal opposition. Moving on to Motion Two, Project Two, Recreation. Mr. Randall?
Move that the sum of $24,000 be appropriated for the following capital expenditure, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of $24,000 be transferred from free cash, set expenditures to be under the direction of the department named below, Recreation, and that is for the purpose of well cleaning of the irrigation system at Opochinski Fields.
Hearing a second on that, Mr. Randall?
Yep, this is basically to maintain the fields, and the town has put a lot into, a lot of investment into the Pottle Street Fields. They need well cleaning, and as I understand it, it really needs to be done sooner rather than later.
Ladies and gentlemen, that had Board of Selectmen favorable 4-0-0, Finance Committee favorable 5-0-0, and Capital Planning Committee favorable 3-0-0. You coming forward, Mr. Hall? Oh, I'm sorry.
No microphone.
Oh, you got it? Ms. Coleman?
Yes, 20 Howland's Lane. I'm just wondering if this is going to help with the drainage on the fields at Pottle Street, or if anyone can speak to that regarding how the fields are pretty much not playable when it rains?
Sure.
And I do believe right behind you is our Rec Commissioner, Ms. Woodward, so if she could come forward, and question being is, with the cleaning of the well, well cleaning for the irrigation system, is this going to help the drainage at the fields?
Susan Woodward, 136 Gross Street, and also the Recreation Director for the town of Kingston. This project doesn't have anything to do with the draining on the fields. This is specifically to the irrigation system itself.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Hall?
Daniel Harlow, 31 Howland's Lane. So one question is, wasn't there a revolving fund created for the Recreation Department so that they wouldn't be coming to town meeting to ask for free cash?
So question that's before us is, was there a revolving fund for Recreation? And yeah, we voted every year, right? So we know there's a revolving fund, so the second level of the question is, is that meant to fund these expenses? And Mr. Warren, I mean, Mr. Randall, can you address that, or do we need to hear from the Board of Selectmen?
This would be a capital request, so it's coming out of free cash, so it's not coming out of a revolving fund.
We know that, but the question is, is can it come out of revolving fund? Ms. Woodward, can you address that? Is that something that's, can come out, or does Mr. Tell, you were leaning forward? Ms. Woodward, could you address that, is can these irrigation or whatever, the repair, the cleaning, come out of the revolving fund for ongoing repairs or maintenance of our fields?
There is money in the revolving fund that can be utilized for ongoing repairs and maintenance, but however, not to something of this caliber and this expense. The money is not there for that. So we have a specific budget that we propose every year for that, and out of the revolving fund does come property repairs and maintenance. But again, as Mr. Randall suggested, this is more of a capital expense at the tune of $24,000.
And revolving fund, just for my own identification, that is funded from the people that use the fields paying fees? Is that right? No?
Correct. There's a couple of things that go into that. One is there's a cell tower on the Opochinski Athletic Complex property. That money goes into that particular revolving fund. And then there's also user fees that also goes into the revolving fund as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Hall.
So my question is, if there are funds available, why don't we utilize the revolving funds that are available and then try to make up the difference with potentially asking for free cash?
It's up to you.
So I mean, again, I guess that's the question, is Ms. Woodward saying there isn't enough funds, but you're saying use what's available and then make the rest free cash. Ms. Woodward?
Yes, I can actually give you a quick rundown on the proposed expenses for the fiscal year. For example, we have the irrigation system.
No, 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 no. I guess, I'm sorry.
That would explain why there's no money in the revolving fund to use for this kind of a repair, because the money that's already in the revolving fund is already allocated for other expenses, if you want to just keep it as simple as that. So there's not, the money that is currently in the revolving fund is already allocated for the other expenses needed to maintain the property and all of the systems down at the complex throughout the year. And I have the specifications, if you'd like that detailed.
Okay. Mr. Hall?
Okay, well, I do have a follow-up, because I believe this was brought up a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago. I can't remember if monies were appropriated for it, but I remember having a discussion with you, Ms. Woodward, with regard to, because I do a lot of irrigation work myself, were any of the suggestions that I had provided, implemented in order to prevent this sort of cost from being incurred, such as purging the well on a regular basis or using scrubber valves?
So we actually have done that. This year, we do purge every single, every single season that the operation system opens. There's a beginning purge. We also do it midway through the season, and then there's the winterization. So the system is being run, and all of that is happening at least three times a year. We also have replaced, I think this year, we replaced 50 heads. Part of that because of the iron content that's in there, in the particular water that's coming out of that, which we really have no control over. And we have changed multiple heads. This year, there was 50 of those, and some of those have been included, the scrubber valves. But as we continue to do that, and the water starts up through the wells, you can see from the supplemental documentation that that's the iron sediment that's actually coming from the wells, that we need to do this whole redevelopment and rehabilitation of the wells. And then after this particular year, we will be instituting an additional funding source, or allocating funds to do one well per year, so it wouldn't be at a high cost at this particular situation.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. Mr. Fons?
One last question. Is this for all three wells? I'm sorry, or is this just for one well?
Redevelopment of all three wells.
Well, that was one of my questions, so I only left with one question.
Mr. Fons?
I just want to know, how many quotes did we get for this job?
I've solicited for two quotes, and this is actually a particular company that our Water Department uses right now. Weston and Sampson is the quote that we currently have at this point. I hadn't received another quote prior to this particular town meeting. But in order to move forward with this, we would need to go out to bid, and I will solicit again, so this company, another company that the Water Department uses, and also three, so the requirement would be a three-bid solicitation.
So just to clarify, as of right now, we actually only have one quote?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could elaborate on that?
Wait a minute. I've got another gentleman that I'd like to see behind Ms. Woodward first. He's been patiently standing there.
Andy Davis, 11 Crystal Drive, Recreation Commissioner as well. The, the water that we suck out of the ground, does anybody in town have a well like I do? It's awful. And if you have the supplemental package with the pictures, and you can see like the red caked up stuff, it's like sucking frosting through the well. And every once in a while, we do the best we can to keep these things clean, but every once in a while, they just get too gunked up to work. And we are at that point right now where these things are just way too gunked up. If you look at the picture, the, all the red, you know, sediment and the buildup on there. And if we want the irrigation system to work, and we want to have green grass down there, we've got to have the wells pumping. So I urge everybody to vote yes on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Seeing no further debate, ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor of Articles?
Water interests me. I'm just curious, is that manganese?
No, I think they said it was lead. Irons, sorry. Iron, lead.
Is it red manganese iron?
All right, Ms. Sherman, to me, please, and then to the microphone so people can hear you.
I'm just curious, what is this red substance which is in our groundwater coming up?
I guess they're saying it's iron, right? Or lead? I forgot now what I said. Iron.
It's all solids.
Okay. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor of Article Six, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'm sorry, motion, I wasn't clear. Got to recall it, sorry. Motion Two, Project Two, Article Six. Um, Motion Two, Project Two, Article Six. Article Six.
It's listed as.
It's ours, it's ours, too. Unfortunately, we moved them, yeah. All those, so this is the same one, Recreation, Well Cleaning, and Irrigation, everything we just talked about. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with minimal opposition. Moving on to Motion Three, Project Three, Fire Department, Article Six. Go ahead, Mr. Randall.
Move that the sum of $6,811 be appropriated for the following capital expenditures, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of $6,811 be transferred from free cash, set expenditure to be under the direction of the department named below, Fire Department. And this is for the purpose of Kingston's, covering Kingston's portion of a FEMA AFG grant for the purchase of a breathing air compressor. The total project cost was $82,567, 5%, which is what we have to cover. It comes out to $6,811.
Having that motion, do I have a second? Hearing a second on that, ladies and gentlemen, we have Board of Selectmen favorable vote 4-0-0, Finance Committee favorable 5-0-0, Capital Planning Committee favorable 3-0-0. Mr. Randall, you want to address it, or?
Yeah, this is basically so our firefighters can breathe fresh air. They've had aging storage tanks for their air compressor. You know, Mark Douglas, if he's here, could really speak to this better than I. He did a great job.
I'm not sure we need it, to be honest with you.
Yeah, yeah. It's basically so your firefighters can breathe fresh air, and you know, it's 5% of a FEMA grant, so.
All right, seeing no debate, ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor of Motion Three, Project Three, Fire Department, for $6,811 for the air compressor, all those in favor, say aye. And all those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Article Seven. Ms. Fury?
Move that the sum of $62,300 be appropriated for the following equipment expenditures, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of $62,300 be transferred from free cash to be under the supervision of the department's organizations, and for the purposes and the amounts as follows. Project One is a new one based in your books. It's for the library, computer replacement, $9,000. Project Two, Board of Health, Public Awareness and Advertising, $1,000. Project Three, Board of Selectmen, Kingston's portion of the Plymouth County Grant Writer Program, $12,500. Project Four, Board of Selectmen, Employee Liability Reserve Fund, $30,000. Project Five, Board of Selectmen, Asbestos Abatement at the Reed Center, $9,800.
Ladies and gentlemen, do I get, we hear a second on that?
Second.
Getting a second on that. Ladies and gentlemen, we have Board of Selectmen, 4-0-0 favorable on all five projects. We have Finance Committee favorable 5-0-0 on Projects One, Two, Four, and Five, and Finance Committee unfavorable 2-3-0 on the Kingston's portion of the Plymouth County Grant Writing Program for $12,500. So Ms. Fury, if you can address?
Again, the supplementals refer to each project. Project One is to purchase computers, public computers at the library. Project Two is public awareness and advertising. With the new vaping issues going on, the Board of Health is looking for additional money so they can educate people on that. Project Three is Plymouth County, plans on hiring a grant writer to be shared currently by three towns, and the grant writer would be employee of Plymouth County. Kingston is looking to take advantage of that. It is, again, a pilot program that would run until June 30, 2020. This voting yes for that does not extend or commit us to anything past June 30 of 2020. And the town has been successful in getting a lot of grants lately, and that takes a tremendous amount of time. And with a grant writer, we, our expectations would be that we would at least realize at least $12,500 worth of grants, awards to the town. And then Project Five. Project Four, the Employee Liability Reserve Fund. This was set up as a recommendation by the Finance Committee years ago to be proactive and fund retirement monies due when someone retires. And we have some retirements coming up right now, and there's not enough money in the fund to pay out those retirements, so we're adding money to the fund. And then Project Five is the asbestos abatement at the Reed Center. That was, resulted as a project that's putting LED lights into the Reed building. When they went, when the vendor came to give some prices on estimates, they lifted up the tile in the ceiling and found asbestos up there. So before the project can move forward with replacement with LED lights, the asbestos needs to be taken care of in the, in the ceiling.
Thank you, Ms. Fury. Mr. Bonsek?
Peter Bonsek, Temple Drive. Question on the Kingston portion of Plymouth County Grant Writer Program. It is 12-5 now, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Has the, the vote of the Finance Committee changed with the, the amount going down? And if it has not, if it's still 2-3-0, I'd like to find out why the three voted against it.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsek. Ms. McKinnon?
I'll take this one since I was one of the folks who voted in opposition of this article. To answer your first question, the Finance Committee has not taken a revote on the revised amount. However, my rationale for not supporting this article at this time is that the program description clearly indicates that it's going to be, or intended to be, a collaboration of three communities. There are no other communities that are signed up at this time, and my preference would be to wait and have other communities sign up to the program, and we would join them once we knew that our partners existed and who those partners were. And so I would prefer to see that the program establish itself with other communities leading the way.
Thank you. Mr. Bonsek?
There was three that voted no, so.
She's speaking for the opposition. She's speaking for the opposition.
Oh, okay. All right. No, thank you, that's what I needed.
Thank you. Mr. Um, thank you. Mr. Fons?
I'm actually all set, thank you.
Mr. Fons is all set.
David Kennedy, 13 Copper Beach Drive. I'd like to move the question.
So ladies and gentlemen, you have a move the question. Hearing a second. All those in favor of moving the question say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with minimal opposition. Ladies and gentlemen, on the Article Seven motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I'm going to go for a count, sorry. Ms. Joyce, Mr. Dalton and Mr. Armstrong. It was just an acoustical feel in the room. Everybody knows where they're counting? All right, all those in favor of the Motion Seven? What is this? Lime? Lime card in the air, please. This is Article Seven. Well, you're voting the motion. Yeah, we vote the motion, but it's the motion on Article Seven. Okay, thanks, sorry. All motions are what we move and vote on. So the motion on Article Seven, all those in favor, lime card in the air. Mr. Dalton? Sorry, four-five?
Four-five.
Four-five. Ms. Joyce? Ms. Joyce, twenty-five, two-five. Mr. Armstrong?
Nineteen.
Mr. Armstrong is nineteen. Ladies and gentlemen, those in opposition to the motion on Article Seven, lime card. Mr. Dalton? Mr. Dalton is three. Ms. Joyce? Ms. Joyce is seventeen. Mr. Armstrong?
Fifteen.
One-five. Mr. Armstrong is fifteen. For a total of thirty-five. So ladies and gentlemen, motion carries with eighty-nine in favor and thirty-five in opposition. Moving on to Article Eight. Water Commissioners? Oh, Casca. I know, I didn't.
Move to appropriate by borrowing $225,000 to pay the cost of designing and engineering, upgrades to the water distribution system, including the relocation and/or reconstruction of related flow pressure control stations, the extension of related water lines, the acquisition of any easement and land necessary to complete the improvements described above, and to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow this amount under, under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 8, Paragraph 4, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for the project. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed and to pay such costs by a like amount.
Thank you, Mr. Casca. Ladies and gentlemen, hearing a second on that. That has Board of Selectmen favorable action 400. Capital Planning favorable action 500. And there is no vote on this by Finance Committee. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Finance Committee has voted two-one-three. That would be opposite, I mean, that would be abstaining, right? Three, three's abstaining, yeah, just wanted to confirm, okay. Thank you, Mr. Casca, if you can address your motion?
Yes, back a few weeks ago, we had a meeting of the Board of Water Commissioners where we had all the principals involved in a project that will revitalize the mall. And in the discussion phase that, that took place at that meeting, we learned that the town had applied for and was in a position likely to receive a grant from the state. Typically, the Board of Water Commissioners does not engage in running water mains for anybody. If a developer wants to run water mains, they come in, they make a proposal and we have a public-private partnership where we get them to run the water mains that they need for their project. In this particular case, the town of Kingston received a grant from the state of Massachusetts that, that will allow us to run the water main from the high-pressure system to the, into the low system, which will be an economic revitalization for that section of town. Since the grant is an economic revitalization grant, that's the only purpose that that money can be spent on. After that discussion, the Board of, a member of the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator called me and asked me if we wanted to have a placeholder on this particular warrant. The reason for that is that the, the plan underway right now to build the apartment houses where Sears used to be is designed and is planned and does not need Kingston water for their fire suppression. They need water for their domestic water, but they do not need Kingston water for fire suppression. They have designed and developed a plan and a system that will work for them. We felt this in the best interest of the town, that if they're going to have, if they're going to build that project, that it also include Kingston water system to help support their fire suppression system. So the timing became an important issue. If we waited till the annual meeting to present this to you, there's a good chance that the construction would be far enough along the way that they may not be able to alter the plan that they currently have, getting approval from their, their funders. So we asked to have this placeholder held. Consequently, the town did receive that grant from the state of Massachusetts. So the money we're asking for here, we will borrow but will be paid back through the grant from the state of Massachusetts. So it will cost the town of Kingston nothing. We will get to run a high-pressure system into an area of town where the economic development is taking place and will take place in the future. It's win-win-win for everybody in town, from our perspective. The Kingston Board of Water Commissioners voted three to zero to support the plan.
So the Water Commission has voted, sorry, three-zero-zero?
Three-zero.
Okay. Mr. Bonsek and then I'll go over to the lady over there.
Peter Bonsek, Temple Drive. So when you made this vote, this vote was made after it was already put on the draft warrant, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Where is the water main going to be placed? If you go through this project, where is it going to be placed?
Well, actually, if you look at the, at the motion, the motion is to get money in order to have an engineer do the engineering on that. Do we have a general idea where it's going? Yes, there's a right-of-way that connects, that we were able, we'll be able to connect to that is currently in Indian Pond Estate. So, yeah, we know generally where we will connect there. Exactly where it will go will be up to our engineers who will design the feature.
Even though the grant states...
One second, Mr. Bonsek, with the engineers designing the feature, I'm just asking a question first. You said that, um, starting out at the right-of-way at Indian Pond, but you're saying that then where it would go engineering is for the, is for the sole purpose of the fire suppression up at this old Sears?
The design is to run the high-pressure water main from Indian Pond Estates to that lower section of town near where the, where the Kingston Collection is.
Okay, back to you. I'm sorry, Mr. Bonsek for interrupting you.
Uh, in the grant, it states a couple of times that it's going to be located along Rabbit Road. So if you would discuss this, you would know that that's where it's going to be versus where the grant states that.
Actually, I do, don't know where that's going to be because we have engineers that will design it. In conversations with the engineer who was here, we can get up and actually explain it to you if necessary. Actually, it's unlikely that we will choose the, the route that will go to Rabbit Road.
All right, so this is false information on the grant that...
No, it's not false information.
How is it not?
One second, gentlemen, I'm not going to have you arguing. One minute, Mr. Casca has indicated that it's unlikely for whatever information he has now to use the route to, perhaps, Rabbit Road, sorry, I have a problem with that one. Rabbit Road. Mr. Bonsek, back to you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, in your, um, in your will serve letter, it states that it is up to the developer to come up with a design, to build a design. It's responsible and developed to design and construct a functional system that will provide the required fire flow for the project that is designed and as built. The fire flow shall be adequate pressure and volume for time period required by applicable regulation, code and standard. Design and function shall be subject to the approval of the Fire Department. So if you're telling them they have to pay for it, design it, why are we doing just expansion?
They're designing their own fire suppression system because they have to go to banks in order to get loans to build a project. They couldn't wait for us to get the grant, have this at town meeting, make the vote and then actually run the water main line to them. That's not enough information for their, their creditors. Their creditors require a plan that's shovel-ready, ready to go. So they have a plan that is shovel-ready and ready to go. The design of the fire suppression system that they've, that they've put in, in our opinion and in the opinion of the Fire Chief, is workable, but it is not the very best system that we can put in for the town of Kingston. Should we, should we be able to run the high-pressure system from Indian Pond Estate down to where Kingston Collection is, that would be the best-case scenario for the Fire Department, for the Water Department and for the, for the business.
Okay, so question is...
One second, one second. Point of order, yep? No, no, I'm running time. So when he, he's on a timer. And so the point of order is, I'm timing, it goes off when somebody's answering, it goes back on for, for he has. It's not, somebody would use up all of his time. So now my time's off because I forgot it stopped, but... So I'm timing it, ladies and gentlemen. One minute, Mr. Casca. I mean, Mr. Bonsek. Question, Fire Chief, would you like to address this on what you are asking a protocol for the fire? Because I mean, it's his fire suppression system. And whether or not you understand that, what I understand his information is, is that the, normally, the Water Department requires all vendors or contractors or, you know, people coming to town to build their own fire suppression systems in their own buildings. They're saying that the will, the will, what was it called? Will?
Will serve.
Will serve letter, thank you. The will serve letter that was issued by the Water Commissioner says that contractors to do it. Now, you're saying, and the Water Commissioner is saying that, that we, you don't believe that it's up to the standard of what the town of Kingston should have up at the Sears and this is for the apartments, right? Mr. Casca, yeah. So, Mr., I mean, Chief, if you don't mind, I think...
Back up a little bit and start from scratch as far as what the Fire Department requires. There's codes that cover any building that's constructed relative to the fire code, how it's constructed, what it's built of, et cetera, et cetera, without getting into many, many hours of description on that. That said, we reviewed the presentation that Trammell Crowe had made to us in a meeting that involved a depressed water supply, in other words, a tank in the ground. There's going to be several thousand gallons. Any Fire Chief is going to stand before you, I know few that wouldn't, and say that an uninterrupted supply of water in the proper pressure and volume is what you want for any residential fire, whether it be large or small. So to put a tank underground that had a limited amount of water, although it meets code, is not the preferable way to approach this. What is good for that south end of town is a high-pressure water main connecting both districts. We then have an uninterrupted water supply for not only the mall, but any commercial development that goes beyond this, any residential development that goes on, excuse me, beyond this, as well as the current residence and development that's there. Small side story, we're working with a developer that's converting a large commercial building now. He's going to have to put in an auxiliary fire pump rather than use strictly town water and pressure and volume that's appropriate for his facility. That's going to cost him a great deal of money to do that. In my view, as the Fire Chief, that is not the best option for the community. That indicates to you that your pressures are low, your volumes are low. As you look through that south end of town, and I'm, I'm going to push your eyes away from the mall for a minute. There's a lot more in the south end of Kingston than Independence or, excuse me, Kingston Collection. There's an entire district that has low water pressure, as, as the Water Commissioners will, will attest to. This will solve that problem. Uh, this is not just the mall, okay? From the Fire Chief's perspective, this is going to solve an enormous problem for us. It's going to solve a problem for the residents and it's certainly going to help with commercial development in that end of town. With regards to the fire suppression system that's designed for the Trammell Crowe project, which is essentially what we'll call the apartments at Independence or, excuse me, Kingston Collection, that is going to be designed in conjunction with us, with a fire protection engineer of their choosing. We will use a third-party engineer to review those specifications and come to an agreement on the best possible fire suppression for that building. That is typically how it's done. This is an unusual case. I could direct you also to L. Knife and Son, who use a pond, essentially, a reservoir to draw their water from. Similar but different in some sense. It's a static water supply on site. That would be what Trammell Crowe would be proposing, a static water supply on site. Theirs would be a tank, L. Knife would be a pond. This is not the best way to serve the community, folks. It just isn't. The water main is the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, Mr. Casca, one further question and then I'll be back to you quickly, Mr. Bonsek, would be if we, if this high-pressure water main goes out to that section of town and further development goes in, is that going to, is this new high-pressure water main going to sustain further development? Beyond the current development that's proposed?
Actually, the only way we can do this is if it does do that because the grant from the state of Massachusetts was for economic development, not for one particular project. So this is to support economic development in the south end of Kingston, which is the one place in town where we have the available land. We have opportunities to put some businesses in there. I, I've been coming to town meetings since 1975 and I hear frequently people complaining about how much taxes cost. Here's an opportunity to get some commercial development in an area that's not going to impact a large number of residents. It's win-win-win across the board for the town of Kingston.
Thank you, Mr. Casca. One question, this is just for the engineering, two-hundred and twenty-five thousand, is that what I?
Yep.
Yep. If this went into, were to go in, what is the overall cost expected? Ballparking.
That's a hard one because we had an original engineering suggestion that it would cost us around $3.2 million. And our engineer has then gone back to the drawing board and done some creative engineering to the point where we haven't voted on this, so this is not anything the Water Department can bring forward to you. But it looks like we can save substantial amount of money doing, doing it differently. And it's the doing it differently which will result in us not touching Rabbit Road. Originally, we were going to run a water loop. In order to run a loop, you have to connect the system at one point and then reconnect it at another point. That creates a loop. If we don't create the loop, we don't have to go anywhere near Rabbit Road. We also don't have to go under a, a river. There's a lot of really good reasons why we might use this other way. And I just found out about it actually today. And I had a conversation with our engineer prior to the meeting and I'm pretty enthusiastic about the new idea.
Great, thank you. Back to you, Mr. Bonsek, to wrap it up.
Okay, yes. So the problem is they have low pressure, they need high pressure, correct?
This, the, the south end of town has low pressure and needs high pressure.
The mall has low pressure and need high pressure.
The south end of town has low pressure and needs high pressure.
I think that is yes. Then our last year at the town meeting, when you spoke for the new $7 million water treatment plant, you said that that plant that we're still waiting to build, from what I understand, will take care of the rest of the town that we should be fair to the other people in town. So how is it that we still need, if this treatment plant is going to take care of the high pressure, why do we need this?
Well, first of...
Well, one second. I think if, if my memory, if I can just clarify, that's treatment of manganese in the water. This is for high pressure. They're two different, they're like an apple and an orange, right? I just want to, Mr. Casca, is that right?
Yes, but can I finish?
No, 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 I want that question answered. He, he's indicating that the $7 million treatment... No, no, no. I want that question answered. He's indicating that the $7 million treatment plant that you said would solve the water in town, that was to treat the water in town. Is this water, high-pressure water main, different than treating the water?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, just trying to...
The treatment plant is for the low-pressure section of town. The high-pressure section of town already has a treatment plant. We voted and built that. And for those of you that live in the section of town that has the high water pressure, you might have noticed that your manganese has disappeared and your water is crystal clear.
Okay, so I'm missing something here. The mall has low pressure. It needs high pressure. The $7 million plant, you just, did you not just say that? Am I not hearing that?
No, actually, I said the south section of...
Mr. Bonsek, please don't get argumentative at this point. What I, I want some clarity here. He's asking very simple. Is the $7 million water treatment plant, does that resolve high-pressure water in the south end of town?
No.
Okay.
Well, that's not what you said when you got the vote for it.
Okay. Well, let's not go into that because I think they're apples and oranges. Thank you, Mr. Bonsek. Me, I'm...
Sorry, I hate Rabbit Road. I think what I'm hearing, now that it's been explained a little bit, the money that's being asked for is to propose a plan. And then from there, that plan would then be further voted on probably in the spring or whenever we get together again. So you answered my question. Obviously, I live on Rabbit Road, so I was curious. Not necessarily against it. Think it's a really long line to run. I just had to redo my well line. It's 300 feet, so no, that would be a huge project. And would be interested if that was an area of consideration, like an impact analysis, things of that nature. But I think you already know there's a brick there and all those other good things, and would have been interested in tying in if that was possible, but probably not. I think this, this next question is really from my general understanding and possibly something that would be interesting to everyone else. The line about acquisition of any easements and land necessary, the, what does that mean? Taking votes and...
The one, I'm sorry, there's so much feedback. Can you guys fix that? There's so much feedback on that mic right now that I'm hearing...
It's probably me.
But I did hear, did hear you. I can answer your question.
Well, if everybody, did everybody hear the question?
No.
Because I didn't. So if you can state the question clearly again.
Sorry.
It's not your fault.
I'm curious to know what the acquisition of any easements and land necessary to complete the improvements means.
All right, so acquisition of easements and land. Mr. Koska.
Okay, when we come with the motion before the town, we have to cover all possible contingencies because if we left that out and then we needed to get an easement from somebody, we're dead in the water. We have to wait till the next, next town meeting in order to get that permission. So everything is included here. I personally can't see where there's an easement that we'll need to obtain, but if we do, the language is in, is in the warrant item, and if it passes, we won't have to come back to the town to ask for that permission.
Kidding me on easement, just I think I have an easement on my property for Verizon, but that's usually an agreement with the parties. It's not like taking the land. It's allowing access to it, right?
We have...
One second, Mr. Koska. I'll let Attorney Talman address that, that there's no governmental taking in this article.
So two things. There's no taking. We would have to be specific on that. If the easements are freely granted, people volunteer them for, for water purposes, and that doesn't have to come back to town meeting either. If people were charging for that easement, they have to spend money as to a specific interest in land, then we'd have to have another town meeting vote on that, where it would be specifically described with reference to a plan. So this is maybe some voluntary donation of easements, or this and that, the work necessary to draw those up and what they are, but not actually any adversarial or appropriations necessary to buy specific easements.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hallen.
Corlent Hall, 31 Hollands Lane. If any of the easements are going to be going underneath the train tracks, who would pay for the easements if, if they wouldn't be given voluntarily and if someone didn't want it to be paid for either? Would it have to be a taking under the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution?
Well, takings don't go under the Fifth, but...
We've dealt...
No, Mr. Koska, that's beyond you. I'm sorry. You'd have to, I think you need to address that on, I think we just talked about that. All easements would have to be voluntarily, otherwise would have to come back. And there can't be any takings.
Yeah, Corlent, that would have to come back before this body.
Come, come back for what?
A town meeting vote and an appropriation necessary to do that?
But it could be a taking. But it would have to come back to the body.
It potentially could be a taking, but...
Not at this article, this town meeting.
Correct, but it potentially could be a taking.
Potentially. As to taking land in public use, that would have to be examined. If it was underneath the tracks, then that'd be something we'd have to examine. But that's well out in front of us. So this, this vote does not do any of that.
I just like to have as much information prior to making votes.
Got it.
Mr. Koska, one second. You need to answer what? We just had the taking and easements answered.
I'd like to answer his question because we're not really talking about taking...
I know, that's what Talman just answered, though. So we don't need that, that should come from council. We're not talking about taking easements.
We have dealt with the...
Mr. Koska, no, thank you. Back to you, Mr. Hallen. You just answered by town council. Can't answer any better.
And seven years ago, we weren't talking about taking down the windmill. So this is why we have to ask these questions now. Also, why is the town supporting private entity for point of commerce? And how do they select which private entities they find worthy to support using public funds?
The town is not supporting any individual particular entity. The town is taking advantage of a state grant to increase the water pressure in the south section of town due to an economic development grant granted by the state of Massachusetts. It can only be used for economic development, and it can only be used in the south section of town. It is for the entire south section of town. Earlier, the fire chief was mentioning very clearly that forget the mall. That's an issue. They don't need us. They're all set to go. They really don't need us. But in the best interests of the water system, in the best interests of the fire suppression system, running a high-pressure system from Indian Pond Estates down, down that, across Marion Drive and down there, opens up high-pressure water for all of development that will go on in that section of town. That's what we got the grant for. We didn't get the grant for anything to do with the mall. We get the grant for development in the south section of town.
Thank you, Mr. Koska.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fonz?
Yes, I'd just like to clarify one thing. You said that the grant has some conditions attached to it that essentially say that it can only be used for economic development, correct?
Yes.
But you also said that there's a section, the south section of town, the residents there have low water pressure. Is that considered economic development to fix that low water pressure in their homes?
If a high-pressure system goes by someone's house, they have the right to tap into that high-pressure system.
Excuse me, that's not my question.
One second, Mr. Fonz, do not jump in. His question is, is he's just saying, I think it's a passive benefit to people because if we're going to bring it out to economic development, if people happen to be on the run, they can tap in. That's what he was answering. So it's a passive benefit to the citizens.
Was it presented on the state grant that it would be benefiting residents that have low pressure in their homes?
It didn't need to be.
It didn't need to be. But it, but was it?
No.
Okay. Do you think it's fair to present it to the state in one way and present it to the body here in another way?
I think the grant speaks to itself, and I guess what you're saying, it's still passive.
Okay, as it pertains to...
I know. I just stopped it. I just stopped it. I mean, really. Go ahead, Mr. Fonz.
Through the moderator, as it pertains to the comment regarding that typically we don't support using public funds to run water mains for developers, is it safe to say that the reason we don't typically do that is that we don't think it's fair for the Kingston taxpayers to foot the bill for private development? Is that why we typically don't do that?
No, because the Kingston taxpayers don't pay for the stuff the water department does, the ratepayers do. We are an enterprise system that's paid for by ratepayers. But the answer to your question correctly is yes, we don't put that burden on ratepayers.
Okay, so I guess, I guess where I'm hung up is if we don't want to put that burden on the people of Kingston that are ratepayers, why do we think that it's fair to put that burden on Massachusetts taxpayers? I mean, all of us in the room here are not just taxpayers in Kingston. We're Massachusetts taxpayers as well. So it seems to me that although grants can seem to be an attractive option, I don't know that it's right for us to foot the bill for private developer spread across the entire state of Massachusetts for all the other taxpayers. Because if other towns do the same thing, then we get thrown into that and pay for the same thing as well.
We're not...
Thank you, Mr. Fonz. That doesn't, that wasn't a question, Mr. Koska. That was his statement.
Do you agree with that?
No, no, no. You're not asking that question, obviously. Mr. Fonz, your time's up.
Oh, that's good. Thank you.
Sarah?
Jason Edge, 95 Pawnview Drive. Question regarding easements. How many easements does the town have right now in Indian Pond Estates to run this water main?
One, I believe.
One. And where is that easement? And lot number?
It's an easement where there is currently an access road.
And what access road is that?
I can ask our superintendent to come up. He has a much better idea of where exactly that easement is. I've never walked it, but he has.
Matt Dash, Water Superintendent. The current easement is through the, it's referred to as the emergency access. It's by Copper Beach, the tee parking lot, and Country Clubway.
Okay. The other, the other question I have is for this being for economic development, do we have commitment letters for future development or developers to purchase this new water main?
The water main is being provided by a grant from the state of Massachusetts. We don't need to have any...
No, no, that wasn't his question, though. I think we all know that. He's wondering if you already have, or...
No.
I think that's more of a Board of Selectmen question. Is, is there any commitment letters for further economic development in that section of town? I assume that's what you're asking.
Correct, yes.
No, no one has come to ask for a water hookup. That's the only thing we would have information.
So my...
One second. Has, has, is, does the Board of Selectmen want to address that? Has any? No, okay. Just...
No, it's more that, starting from the water.
No, I get that. He's just asking if there was a commitment for, you know, for this economic development that we're, that we're talking and proposing.
For the water line.
No, okay. Okay.
So why are we running this then if we have no commitment to do this? If the taxpayers of Kingston are going to foot the bill for this, for, for, for somebody, we have, we have no commitments here.
Um, Mr. Koska, yeah, very briefly. I think we've discussed it.
The taxpayers are not paying for this. The state of Massachusetts is paying for it. There are communities all across the state of Massachusetts that apply to the Massachusetts State Government for economic development grants that they grant based on their need basis. Essentially, what happened was the state of Massachusetts determined that Kingston was one of the more needy communities for economic development in a section of town. But there are towns and cities all across the state of Massachusetts to get economic development grants from the state.
Thank you. That's, it's basically what Mr. Fonz said, I think it was, which is state taxpayers as opposed to Kingston taxpayers. Mr. Creed?
John Creed for Bayberry Lane. I move the question.
Thank you, Mr. Creed. Having a second on that, ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with minimal opposition. Now, ladies and gentlemen, on the original motion on Article 8, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
For two-thirds, I'm going to count it. I think I'm better off, yeah. Count it. Sorry. This requires a two-thirds vote, ladies and gentlemen. That's why I'm counting it. If it was a majority, it would not have passed. I mean, it would, it would have passed. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, lime card in the air, please.
47.
Forty-seven? 47.
Forty-seven.
Yes. Ms. Joyce?
31.
Ms. Joyce, 31. Mr. Armstrong?
27.
27. Mr. Armstrong, 27. All those in opposition, lime card in the air, please. I hate this calculator. So I'll double-check my name. Thank you. I don't think I need to worry about my two-thirds vote, right? Mr. Dalton?
Three.
Mr. Dalton is three. Ms. Joyce?
16.
Ms. Joyce is 16. Mr. Armstrong?
12.
Mr. Armstrong is 12. Ladies and gentlemen, the motion carries with a two-thirds majority vote of 104 in favor and 31 in opposition. Moving on to Article 9. Ms. Kramer?
Move that the town vote to accept the fourth paragraph of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, which allows dedication without further appropriation of all or a percentage of particular fees, charges, or receipts to a stabilization fund established under said Section 5B, such acceptance to be effective for the fiscal year 2021, beginning on July 1st, 2020.
Hearing a second on that, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Selectmen has a favorable 400. Finance Committee has a favorable 500. Ms. Kramer?
In 2011, at town meeting, the town citizens voted unanimously to establish a stabilization fund for the purpose of capital expenditures. Since then, revenue generated from the local sales, meals excise tax option has been transferred into the stabilization fund. Every year, it has required a town meeting vote because the original language did not include a specification to designate the revenue annually. So accepting this provision would, would therefore authorize the funds to be moved annually without having to have an annual vote on a town meeting.
Seeing no debate, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Article 10. Capital Stabilization Fund Dedication of Meals Tax Revenue. Ms. Kramer?
Move that the town vote pursuant to General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to dedicate without further appropriation to the existing capital stabilization fund, all revenues derived from Meals Excise Tax, General Law, Chapter 64L, Section 2A, effective for the fiscal year 2021, beginning July 1st, 2020.
Hearing a second on that, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Selectmen have a favorable 400. Finance Committee favorable 500, and Capital Planning Committee favorable 300. Ms. Kramer?
The previous article allowed the verbiage to be added so that money could be annually appropriated to this without a town meeting vote, and this is actually making that happen for the stabilization fund for capital planning. It's very important in this case because there's a five-year plan in place that the department heads and the capital planning committee have been working hard to get into place. And unless we know that there is this annual inflow of, of revenue from the Meals Excise Tax, there's not that certainty that it really needs to have the capital plan in place.
Thank you. Seeing no opposition, I mean, no debate, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, Article 11. Transfer from Municipal Waterways Improvement Fund, Waterfront Committee.
Jared Wakis, 15 Village Path, Vice Chairman of the Waterfront Committee. Move that the town appropriate the sum of $88,000 for the purchase of an inflatable boat, engine, and trailer, and design, engineering permitting, and construction on-site to increase parking and any unforeseen expenses. And to meet this appropriation, said sum to be transferred from the Municipal Waterways Improvement Fund, with said expenditures to be under the direction of the harbor master, and further that the town accountant be authorized to allocate such sums.
Hearing a second on that, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Selectmen have favorable action 400. Finance Committee favorable action 500, and Capital Planning Committee favorable 210. Ms., I'm sorry, I missed your name.
Wakis.
Wakis. I thought it was Bakas. That's what I was like. Mr. Wakis, please adjust your motion.
So if I can direct your attention to page 18 of the supporting documentation, the waterfront committee did vote on this 700. This is no cost to the taxpayers of Kingston. This Waterways Improvement Fund is made up of mooring fees, slip, boat slips at the Ardina, as well as half the boat excise tax. The current boat, inflatable boat that were, would be replaced with this new boat, was purchased in 2001. It has been fixed multiple times. The current hull is leaking, and it's to the point where it is not reliable to work down at the Ardina or do any rescue work. of Kingston. This Waterways Improvement Fund is made up of mooring fees, slip, boat slips at the Ardina, as well as half the boat excise tax. The current boat, inflatable boat that were, would be replaced with this new boat, was purchased in 2001. It has been fixed multiple times. The current hull is leaking, and it's to the point where it is not reliable to work down at the Ardina or do any rescue work. It has a shallow draft, which means it can get out into, when this, the tide's going out, if you go down to like the Jones River, a standard boat can only go three hours on each side of high tide. The other three hours on each side, you can't get out of that location. This boat can get out probably another additional hour each side of the tide. That's it for the boat. For the parking, there is an image in the supporting documentation showing the current parking situation at the Ardina. We would like to have the lot surveyed, and then work on putting a retaining wall in to move the parking lot as, to the lot line as needed, which would alleviate the parking situation now.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, any debate? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on Article eleven, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Article twelve, Special Fund for Non-Town, the, Non-Town Net Metering. Ms. McKinnon?
I can't see, sorry. Move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for special legislation to allow the town of Kingston to establish a revolving fund under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three and a half, for activity produced by non-town net metering. Said legislation to read as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Ms. McKinnon. That being seconded, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Selectmen have favorable vote four-zero-zero. Finance Committee has favorable vote five-zero-zero. Ms. McKinnon?
So, if you, there is a supplement, there's a document in the supplemental handout on page nineteen, but let me briefly describe this. This is something that you guys hear us talk about year after year. We've been talking about it for a number of years now. The line item in our town budget for non-town net metering is not related to any town departmental activity. It is not any kind of a department or operation that we have any influence or control over. It is simply the power purchase agreement that we have entered into with no fossil fuels. By removing this, the revenue and expenditures from our annual operating budget, it provides a more accurate representation of the true cost of operating our town. We advocate that you support this article in order to remove that from the town budget and establish a revolving fund of sorts for that power purchase agreement to be handled. Clear as mud?
That covers it. Thank you, Ms. McKinnon. Seeing no debate, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, moving on to Article thirteen, Establish Police Building Stabilization Fund and Dedication of Revenues. Police Station Building Committee, Mr. Warren.
So, I, I just want to apologize. Selectman Farland, who's a member of the Police Station Building Committee, is, is ill tonight and was unable to attend, so I'm, I'm filling in for her. So, move that the town vote to establish a stabilization fund pursuant, pursuant to General Law, Chapter forty, Section five B, entitled Police Station Stable, Building Stabilization Fund. Said fund being established for the sole purpose of funding the design and construction of a new police headquarters building, and further to dedicate without further appropriation to said fund, all receipts derived from the marijuana tax, General Law, Chapter sixty-four and Section three, which provision was accepted at the annual town meeting held on May fourth, 2019, effective for fiscal year 2021, beginning on July first, 2020.
That being seconded, that has, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Selectmen, no vote. Finance Committee, oh, wait a minute, might be over here now. Sorry. It's one I didn't carry over. Thirteen, that has, Board of Selectmen vote three-zero-one. I was told it was three-zero-one. Three-zero-one, right? That's okay. Three-zero-one, and, does this have Finance Committee, two-one-one? Is that right? You didn't vote it. Okay, they, Finance Committee didn't vote it. Sorry about that, Mr. Warren.
That's okay.
Okay, so that's why I did it wrong. Oh, you know what, it was the above one, okay. Two-one-one. That was voted tonight, right? That was the vote tonight at the meeting. Okay. The Vi, Board of Selectmen was two-one-one at the vote tonight. I'm sorry, Mr. Warren, if you could now address your motion.
Sure. So, the Police Station Building Committee is, is, is looking to the future and hoping that if they come before the town to build a new building, there's already some money set aside for that so that the entire amount isn't being asked for by a town meeting vote. This would allow them to pursue grants, so we had, we had talked a little bit about the new part-time grant rider that was approved tonight. We've seen six million dollars come in over the last year for, for two separate grants for wastewater expansion. We anticipate additional grant money coming in to help fund that project. So, with the new part-time grant rider, with, you know, having a better understanding, and I know Chief Douglas does a tremendous job in his department of, of finding these grants, this would give the building study, or Building Station Committee the opportunity to go after those funds, set them aside, but also dedicate the revenue generated by marijuana sales in Kingston to that fund.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Funtz?
Comment. I just wanted to remind the body here that there were a number of articles pertaining to marijuana shops in Kingston. There was a great deal of opposition to marijuana shops in Kitch, in Kingston. Also, there were, there was an article presented to build a new police station in Kingston, which was ultimately voted down by the taxpayers, by the voting body. So, I just wanted to give hats off to Kingston, because I think this is the only town in the Commonwealth where you seek to take tax revenue from something that the residents didn't want, to build something that the residents didn't want. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Funtz.
So, I have a question about what precedent this sets. So, this was a motion by the Police Station Building Committee. So, let's assume that this passes, and all of the money is raised, and it goes towards the design and the construction of the police station. Does this mean that anybody can then come and petition an article to say, now I want the marijuana tax to go and support the next thing? And how, how is that decision made? And what happens if somebody does have their next thing voted on and passed, and it, the money builds up? Let's say they need fifty thousand dollars, and in one year, they make the fifty thousand dollars, but then they don't actually move forward with design and construction of whatever that next thing is. How, how do we handle that situation?
Thank you. Town Council, if you can address two. I think she kind of raised two issues sub. One is, obviously, if we created the stabilization fund, and it's for this purpose, and all the funds in it aren't used, what happens to those funds? That's number one.
Well, the stabilization fund monies, so first of all, to address your initial question, anyone could petition, provided that they have the correct number of petition signatures, a hundred at a special town meeting, or ten at an annual, or they could seek the Selectmen's addition to the warrant of any article that either changes this formula or adds a new funding source for a similar stabilization fund. There are kind of a finite number of sources of money that could be added in this way. We accepted under Article nine, a statute that allows certain fees and charges and taxes to be directed straight to stabilization. There's only so many of those, but that said, people could change this if they want, if they petition town meeting appropriately, and then come and vote for it. So, for example, it's got, this is, has all the money going for the police station. If people came and said, well, I only want fifty percent of it going to police station, I want the other fifty percent to go to the library. That could happen, too. Now, as to appropriating money out of it, none of this money gets spent automatically. This isn't like a revolving fund. Town meeting then has to vote to take it out. This just puts it in and safeguards it for that purpose. The town meeting can then take it out for that purpose. Technically speaking, the town meeting could potentially take it out for another purpose, but anything taking it out of a specific stabilization fund requires a two-thirds vote anyway, so we'd have to get back together again. This is just an accounting mechanism for the time being.
Well, it's twofold, right? It's creating a stabilization fund, and then it's accounting that all of the marijuana tax revenues goes into this stabilization fund.
Correct.
That's a twofold. So, does that answer your question?
But it raises another one, if I can ask that one.
Certainly.
So, if we vote now to put a hundred percent into, for the police station, but as you were saying, maybe next year, we change our minds and say, okay, fifty percent for the police station, fifty percent for the library, when we actually go to take the money out and spend it, could we decide we want all of it to be split up fifty-fifty, or are we bound into, okay, it's a hundred percent of what we earned in that first year for the police station?
So, it, it depends on how you do it. You could create yet another stabilization fund for, say, again, just the hypothetical, the library, and you'd say it'd be fifty percent of the marijuana money goes there, and then we'd have to amend this stabilization fund so that only fifty percent of the marijuana money goes there. Or, we could rename and change the purpose of this stabilization fund, so it would be a multi-purpose stabilization fund. So, you can get a little creative in how you designate what your stabilization funds are, but those are decisions that this body makes, both with respect to the source of money, what the money's for, and then ultimately with another follow-up vote, how you take that money out and spend it.
Okay, thank you.
One, one second I had, that was the, but one of our questions was, if we vote, if there's a vote at town meeting to take the money out of this, it would be to use it for that benefit unless we amended that stabilization fund. So hypothetically, what she said was, if all the money this year goes into the stabilization fund from the marijuana revenue, then what would happen is, then the vote to take it out would be for use of the police station, unless that stabilization fund was amended.
Well, I mean, technically, you can draw from a stabilization fund for something that's slightly different than its stated purpose. I mean, I can get into the semantics of stabilization fund accounting and the law that's under it, but it, the purpose here, the town meeting purpose certainly is to earmark it for the fund so stated.
Thank you. Yes, and then I have, Mr. Gallagher. Pardon me?
Mr. Sherman was first.
Okay, thank you, for your honesty. Mr. Sherman? Mr. Sherman, you're up.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Adam Sherman, two fifteen Main Street. I'm a little confused about all of this. I would think that it makes more sense to get an approval for a new police station, and then allocate, and then establish a revolving, a fund, stabilization fund, and fund it. Number one. Number two, you know, within thirty days, this could all be moot, because the Attorney General, if it approves what the town wanted at the last town meeting, there will be no tax collected, because there'll be no marijuana sold in Kingston. So, it seems to me to be premature, at this point, to establish a stabilization fund for something that doesn't exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Ms. Stanford?
Janet Stanford, fifty-three Evergreen Street. So, I agree with Mr. Sherman, I agree with John Michael Funtz. The other thing I want to ask, though, I want to ask Josh Warren. I attended the BOS meeting where this was discussed, and the board said that they were going to make an amendment on the floor tonight, that the money wouldn't come from taxes, that it would come from, I can't think of the same, the right name.
Community impact.
One second.
Community impact fees, right. Community impact fees. So, did the Board of Selectmen change their minds?
Mr. Warren?
So, as is often the case, we, we consult town council on, on matters like this to make sure that we, we don't do something that, that would otherwise be inappropriate. So, I'm going to let Jay answer that, because there's a very good legal reason why we're looking at the tax revenue versus the community impact.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. That, we could have just gone, Mr. Calloman?
Yeah, the, the statute has a certain amount of ambiguity in it, but they provide some guidance documents, and they, and they specify that the marijuana tax can be used as, as a source. Because the host community agreement impact fees have a specific purpose, the statute carves out an exception, saying you can't use funds that are already dedicated for a specific purpose. Community impact fees are supposed to be used to offset expenses of the particular marijuana use, so rededicating those specific funds for different use in their entirety has not yet met with the favor of the Division of Local Services. There are some towns and cities that are, are looking at that, though, so I think it's an evolving question. Again, the statute isn't as clear as we'd like it to be, but the immediate guidance we have is that we can go to the tax revenue, but the host community impact fees already have a purpose, so we can't repurpose them.
Okay, then, can I ask Mr. Warren one more question?
Yes.
So, has the board made a decision about the community impact fees, where that money should go?
So, those-
Mr. Warren?
So, those, we actually have to do a meticulous job of accounting for exactly how those are spent. I believe those go into the general fund, and then during the course of, of these businesses operating in Kingston, we'll have to document where those funds were spent in order to actually recoup those. So, those aren't necessarily guaranteed. Those are dollars that are set aside, and if we can justify costs incurred to the town as a result of these businesses, that is, is a pot of money that we could then reimburse ourselves with.
Okay, so-
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Ms. Stanford?
So, my last statement will be, to me, it's a little bit strange that you're not really thinking about those fees and where they're going to go so much, but you're just focused on this police station that, again, might not even get voted in, and a pot shop that might not even exist. So, I would vote no for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Paul Gallagher, Eight Longview Drive, as a resident. I think that all of us can agree, we're concerned about our taxes. Think all of us can agree that every discussion that we have is about economic development. Think all of us can agree that we talked about bringing in medical marijuana, or whatever it might be, retail shops, so that we could increase revenues for the town, because our expenses are getting so much, you know, so, so high. So, my big question is, we, we are here tonight deciding whether or not we're going to take what we consider to be future economic development revenue, and tying it up onto something that we haven't even approved yet. So, basically, we're already spending what we don't even have on something we haven't approved. I suggest we vote no on this. Any revenues that come in town, we need to be able to vote, as a town, where we're going to put them, and it appears to me, through the questions that have been asked, and the answers that we've been given, is that any money that goes into this fund is going to require us to do something else to get that money. Enough of this. Our taxes are high. We're trying to find economic development. We should not be spending it before we even have it.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Me?
Sarah Alter, forty-one Landing Road. Just clarification, please. If we do get this money, where would it go automatically if we do, if we vote this article down?
If you vote no to the article, where will the marijuana money go? Okay. Jay?
General fund.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. McKinnon?
Move the question.
Ms. McKinnon, move the question. All those, having a second on that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with minimal opposition. Ladies and gentlemen, the motion on Article thirteen, sorry, you what? It's a majority vote. On the motion to move the question, you were questioning? That was just to move the question. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was just to move the question, ladies and gentlemen, not to the article. Now, we're going to do the motion on Article thirteen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
That was a, I'm going to call it on a voice vote, you ready? Motion didn't carry. Yeah. Motion, ladies and gentlemen, motion did not carry, and I'm going to declare that on a voice vote. Because that required a two-thirds majority, just so everybody knows. Well, we're moving on. If I can ask one of the ladies on Article twenty-two, if you can come forward and come see it, please, I'd appreciate it. I spoke- forward and come see it, please. I'd appreciate it. I spoke to you out front. Yeah, just one of you. Thank you. If you can come right up on the stage, I'd appreciate it. Moving on to Article 14. Moving on to Article 14, that's Ms. Fury.
Move that the town vote that the custodian trustee of the OPEB fund established under general law, Chapter 32b, Section 20, be authorized to invest monies in the OPEB fund pursuant to the prudent investor rule established in general law, Chapter 203c.
Ladies and gentlemen, hearing a second on that, I have Board of Selectmen favorable 400, and I have Finance Committee favorable 500. Ms. Fury?
What this does is it allows the treasurer a few more options on investing the money that is currently in the OPEB fund.
Thank you. Seeing no debate, ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor of Article 14, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with minimal opposition. Moving on to Article 15. Again, is that you, Ms. Fury, Agricultural Commission? Are you just moving it for them, or are you on that commission?
I'm moving it for them.
Okay.
Move that the town amend the town of Kingston general bylaws to accept the provisions of general law, Chapter 40, Section 8L, and amend Article 14 of Chapter 4 of its general bylaws as printed in the warrant.
Ladies and gentlemen, having a second on that, I have Board of Selectmen vote favorable 301.
What this does, again, the supplemental document on page 21, 2021, it shows that our bylaw doesn't have a lot of meat to it for the Agricultural Commission. By accepting the mass general law, it allows them to have a variety of responsibilities. There is a statement in here that says that they may accept, buy, hold, manage, license, or lease land for agricultural purposes. None of those items can happen without a town meeting vote. The Agricultural Commission right now does not have any funds, nor would they have, get any funds without a town meeting vote establishing an account and allocating money towards that fund. One advantage that this does, does give them as well as its G, it says they may receive gifts, requests, or devices of personal property, or interest. So, it just gives them a little bit more flexibility to conduct the town's business.
Thank you, Ms. Fury. Ms. Hollis?
Yes. Dorothy Pat Hollis, 3 Pebble Lane, Kingston, Massachusetts. I am requesting that the town vote against this particular article.
Aye.
Article 15, based on history. The, and this will be very, very, very quick. In approximately 1992, a group of guys met in Brazil, and they made up some rules and regulations that they thought would be interesting, and it became Agenda 21. It went through United Nations and it became Agenda 21. And Agenda 21 touches on every aspect of life, globalization, switching money from one quantity to the other, telling you where to go, how to build, what property you can build on, whatever. This town belongs to ICICI.
Belongs to what?
I-C-E-I. It's a, it's an organization. I'll tell you what it means. It is, means International Council for Local Environmental Industries. So, it's international, so that when the UN sets up its regulations, we would be responsible to them. And the only way that this could be done is basically not nudging anymore, but making rules and regulations.
But how does this apply to the Agricultural Commission? Are you going to tie that in?
I will.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So, the rules and regulations are passed down, they go from the government, the feds, and then they go to the town, and, you know, well, governments, states, and then the local levels. The problem with this article is that the state itself has no better definitions of what the town is saying, licensing, purchasing of property, but it goes beyond that. It's the unwritten that is not being addressed. And for that reason, I would like the town to vote no on this particular article, and yet, at another point in time, establish their own town agricultural commission and set up the standards by which we want to live, with our farms, on our property, and with no division whatsoever. This particular article allows for land to be called wetlands, when they're not wetlands at all. They may just not have their drains drained. There are just so many complications from this particular article, and you never know what's going to happen until it happens, and you have no recourse because you voted this kind of simple ambiguous kind of regulation in. So, again, I am urging the people of Kingston to speak up. It's a farming society, and there are a lot of individual farms, farming markets. They don't need to be controlled by some outside figure or inside figure. They can make their own decisions, and they do very well at it, and they have done very well at it. So, based on that, I again recommend that the town not vote in favor of this particular article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollis. Mr. Hollis?
Corlentown, 31 Hollins Lane. Having farmed my whole life and been farming extremely successfully for the last 20 years, I oppose this article. It's expansion of government and will increase more regulations and interfere with farmers, so I oppose this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stanford?
Janet Stanford, 53 Evergreen Street. So, I attended a BOS meeting where we talked about different articles, and my concern, I don't know enough about this, but my concern was that when myself and maybe some other people asked, like, what exactly is this? The Board of Selectmen, nobody on the Board of Selectmen could answer the question. They just said, talk to the agricultural, Agricultural Commission. So, I just have a problem with this in general. I, my guess is, I didn't read the supplement, but even if people did read it, my guess is people maybe don't understand this completely. And again, why is it in a special town meeting to begin with? There's no rush for this, so I would suggest vote no until people have a better understanding of what this is. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fury, did you want to address it?
This was put forward by the Agricultural Commission, and it does spell out specifically what the parameters are of their responsibility. And at that time, yes, you are correct, the Board of Selectmen didn't have a lot of knowledge on this. The representative wasn't able to attend that night. But, so, since then, it's clear. It supports what they currently do, which is to promote and develop agricultural resources. It lets them put together plans. It lets them have a chair and a clerk of the committee. It lets them have up to seven members, which they have, they follow that right now. They have five. It says they keep accurate records of its meetings. They do that. So, it's basically what they do now. The only difference is the fact that they can receive gifts and that they can, town meeting vote, accept, buy, hold, manage, license, or lease land for agricultural purposes. Those are the new items that they currently don't, spelled out specifically in our bylaw.
Thank you, Ms. Fury. Mr. Talaman, if you can address and maybe add some clarity?
So, just a little perspective on this particular statute. The legislature wanted to give some footing for a body in town to help promote farming. This statute doesn't give the Agricultural Commission any rights to buy land. It doesn't give them any revenue source at all. That would be subject to a further town meeting vote. It gives them the authority to accept donations of land for agricultural purposes, or agricultural restrictions, for that matter, and it gives them the opportunity and authority to develop plans for the preservation of agricultural lands, but it gives them zero authority on their own to take land, buy land, appropriate people's lands where money is required. All they can do is accept land, similar to the Conservation Commission accepting conservation land, which they have the right to do, and that's more or less what it's been modeled after. So, just wanted to clarify that.
I think there's just the one question is, is that in the article in the warrant, it says the commission may promote, develop agricultural resources of the municipality and may accept, buy, accept, buy, hold, and manage licensed land.
Right. It gives them the authority to buy because they're an entity empowered to do so, but the statute's quite clear that unless they have a funding to do that and further permission and an appropriation by this body, then they don't have that authority.
Okay, so that's under the statute?
Correct.
Okay, and that's what we're adapting, we're adopting?
Right.
Is technically the statute sightings, Chapter 40, Section 8L?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Mr. Hollis?
Corlentown, 31 Hollins Lane. Just more government, bigger government, less individual liberty, less individual freedoms, more taxes, more regulations. That's all it is. Not necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Hollis. Mr. Randall?
Yeah. Kingston's always been a farming community.
State your name and address.
Bradford Randall, 10 Grace Beach Road. Kingston's always been a farming community. Goes back hundreds of years, and a lot of those farms are cranberry bogs that have either been donated to open space, where now they're overgrown and you walk on them. They're beautiful parts of land in town, or they become developments, where houses are built. I think this is important because it would allow those people who currently operate those cranberry bogs, you know, that's not the only thing it would apply to, but that's one, to keep that legacy alive of what they've contributed to the agricultural identity of Kingston for generations beyond, and that's by donating the land to the Agricultural Commission so that it can stay agricultural. And what that does, in my opinion, it helps Kingston stay close to those roots, those agricultural roots, which are such a defined part of our history. I don't see a big problem with this, and certainly couldn't follow the discussion about Agenda 21, or whatever that was. I think this is just kind of a important thing to keep Kingston Kingston.
Thank you. Seeing no further debate, ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with a majority vote. Moving on to Article 17, Mr. Bouchard. It is you, right? I said 16, right?
No, you said 17. Could we skip 16?
Oh, I'm sorry. I have 16 open, and I was calling you for... You might not be happy tomorrow when they didn't pass. What are you doing?
Tommy, hold on one second.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Move that the town amend the town of Kingston zoning bylaws as printed in the supplemental documents.
I don't think you can do that. Those weren't promulgated or... You're either moving it pursuant to the warrant, not the supplemental documents. It would have to be moved pursuant to the warrant. That's what was posted. That was the notice given to the citizens. Supplemental documents are literally that, supplemental documents. So, if you, as long as you amend this and say that the town amends the town of Kingston zoning bylaws printed in the warrant, is that to see if the town will amend the zoning by, I mean? Right? Yeah, so just reread it to, as presented, as printed in the warrant. Yeah. Yeah, that's it. Yeah.
Move that the town amend the town of Kingston zoning bylaws as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second? Ladies and gentlemen, a second. That has planning, Board of Selectmen favorable 400, and that has, whoop-de-doo-doo, Planning Board had no vote on it? Is that my understanding?
400.
All right, because even the one I just got doesn't have a vote? So, you are, it's 400 is the Planning Board vote? Okay. Now, just for everybody to be clear, this is the recodifying of the town zoning bylaws. That would be this that was out on the front desk, right, Mr. Bouchard?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's this document that was out on the front desk. So, if you can address your motion now, Mr. Bouchard?
Yes, I'm going to defer to Rob, but...
Sure.
Rob Downey, town planner.
A little bit louder.
Sorry. Rob Downey, town planner. This was a project brought forth by the zoning and subdivision committee. The current bylaw has not been recodified since 1994. The new bylaw being proposed has just updated it to make it more modern, easy to read. It's changed some language in there that wasn't applying, that wasn't in line with state law, and one example would be changing the word from chapel to religious institution. Other than that, everything in the bylaw is the same. It's just a different format, and some of the page numbers have been updated to be accurate, because as it goes on throughout the years, you know, mistakes do happen by putting it together.
Thank you, Mr. Downing, and ladies and gentlemen, town planner. Mr. Bouchard, are you, I mean, Mr. Armstrong, are you coming forward, too?
Well, we do have our consultants here, too, if you guys would like to speak to it.
And the consultant's speaking. Okay. Huh? What? Okay. Well, I guess one second. If we're seeing no debate, I'm not sure we need a consultant to address it, do we? No? Mr. Armstrong, I'm going to defer to your, I will defer to you.
Our consultant has a little question as to the format of the motion. I'd like to, is Jay comfortable with that?
So, you're asking a point of order, which is that questioning the form of the motion, and the consultant's questioning that. So, through you, you're making a point of order on behalf of the consultant?
Yes.
And want town council's view on it. So, let's address it so we don't do something that's irregular and doesn't work. So, you have to go through the microphone, sir, and explain what your point of order.
Madam Moderator, thank you. So, my name's Joel Bard. I'm an attorney with KP Law, and Bob Mitchell's here as well. He's a consulting planner.
One second. Are you on the list?
Yes.
Thank you.
And my concern, Madam Moderator, is with the form of the motion. In my opinion, the way the Planning Board Chair made the motion was actually correct. I understand your concern.
Well, I ruled it out. It can't be moved by supplemental. The notice wasn't given to the citizens. What's given, notice, just so you understand town meeting procedure, notice given to the citizens is the article. That's the notice that was given. The supplemental documentations I received yesterday. So, that's not notice to the citizens, so it has to say pursuant to the warrant.
Madam Moderator, if I can say...
One second, sir. And we're going to get, Attorney Talaman's going to respond.
Joel, I think the issue that the moderator had with that motion is there was a specific set of supplemental materials provided to the body, and these changes are not fully listed. The full recodification is not in the supplemental materials. So, to use that as a reference point versus what was on file with the town clerk wouldn't be as accurate as referring back to what is on file with the town clerk, which is in the, in the article.
That's correct, and the materials that everybody had available. Madam Moderator, if I can begin by saying that my firm represents about 125, 130 municipalities around the state. So, I personally, having practiced there for 30, nearly 35 years, and my firm, we're extremely familiar with these issues. It's a commonplace motion when you have a very lengthy zoning article.
Well, sir, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go down that street. You've got 35 years. I have 32 years. How many years do you have? I'm the moderator. I get to rule on it. It's not, my job and obligation as a, sir, my job and obligation as a moderator, in case you don't know this, is to ensure that the body, the citizens, the voters, have advance notice of what's going to be voted tonight, so that they have an opportunity to come and object. By referring to supplemental material that was only made available even to the moderator yesterday is not advance notice to the citizens. I didn't get that. This was available by virtue of reading the article. This recodification was available, but that's not what's in the supplemental material. So, we're not going to amend the motion. I'm ruling your point of order out of order, or not allowing your point of order, and we're going to go through the warrant, because that's the only way to get this through, and that's the way I'm going to rule tonight. So, if it's wrong, it's wrong. It's my last town meeting. What the heck. But in the meantime, I'm going to go with what I think is the proper notice to the citizens. Okay? Thank you, sir. So, now we have that, so we have the motion that was moved by the warrant, which states that the recodifying of the town, you've given a description in regard to, you're saying there's been a few minor changes of, like, chapel to religious organization to be up to date with the current statutes, and all of the other. So, is it also fair to say that all the changes that have been made in all of our zoning bylaw changes that were voted at town meeting are now codified in this?
All the ones that have been voted on in the past?
Yes, in past town meetings.
Yes.
All right, so that's all now in this codified version of this new zoning bylaw?
That's correct.
Okay. Everybody got it? Everybody got it? We all know what we're voting on? It's this document right here, big heavy one, the new zoning bylaw. Everybody understand what happens is, we have the old zoning bylaw, just so you can all see, we have the old zoning bylaw that has updates, but the updates are always like, revised, as revised, as revised, this will now have all of the current that have been voted at town meeting. Okay? All right, super, so seeing no further debate, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I think that will be clear, at least for the vote. So that was sixteen, now I've got seventeen right here, right? So now seventeen... So we're on seventeen, yeah.
That is correct.
Mr. Bouchard?
Move that the town amend the town of Kingston zoning bylaws as printed in the warrant, and further allow the sections be numbered in accordance with the reformatting as approved under Article sixteen of this warrant.
That being said, and ladies and gentlemen, we have Board of Selectmen favorable four-zero-zero, Planning Board favorable four-zero-zero. Uh, Mr. Bouchard?
Again, I would like to maybe, I don't know who, either Rob or Jason, wanna speak to this article?
Can I just ask one question? Um, so under the, and you can probably answer this, um, sir, is the, we're amending it with what's printed in the warrant, so these numbers, and then, but you're also saying in reformatting, in accordance with the reformatting, so are these the old numbers or the new numbers?
These are the old numbers here being referenced, and then they'll transfer over to the new recodified version that was just approved.
Okay, so, and we don't have those numbers here, though?
Uh, no.
Okay. All right, that's all, thanks. Go ahead.
So this is another recommendation that came from the Zoning and Subdivision Committee. It's to turn the three-A, well, to turn the town center district and the commercial district to allow residential properties on top of commercial buildings. The idea behind this is to create mixed use, as has been noted in the master plan. Page four-point-seven-point-one-eight states that the three-A south exit nine area is envisioned as a mixed-use area through incremental infill development, redevelopment, and rehabilitation. The idea behind this is that as these corridors get built out with all these commercial properties, there aren't enough residents nearby to walk and shop at them, more it's just a pass-through, so if we can get some residential on the top, it could also help out the business owners by giving them some extra income and attracting more business.
Okay, and just so everybody understands, that motion was amended, that's why you guys don't see it all, that's why I was just double-checking, because the motion that you all have is to just accepting, um, changes as presented in the warrant, however, it was also to further to add them into the codification under the new numbers. So that's why I asked that question, just in case you guys don't have that in your printed material. Mr. Harlow?
Daniel Harlow, thirty-one Howens Lane. I just wanna make sure I'm following, so we just voted to accept the new codification, which removed all the revision, you know, revised as of such and such a date. Are we now voting to revise the codification?
Yes, it'll be altering, it'll be adding residential, the, by special permit on top of existing commercial or new commercial?
Yes.
On the new, on the new bylaw that was just approved, so that'll be worked into the new recodified version.
So is the new codified version gonna start saying revised as of essentially the date that we accepted the codification?
Um, yes.
Okay. I think it's backwards, but okay.
Yes, Mr. Martin?
Good evening, Michael Martin, eighteen Prospect Court. The concerns I would have about this relates back to, that's the old area that was called the three-A Development District. As we all know, that any time that you put any commercial enterprises into that, it is a bottleneck. You have any, any increased residential uses on that, it has inadequate parking for anything there to begin with, there's not an inordinate amount of land to add any residential uses, that will only compound with the residential development in Cordage Park, which is set to have their residency and further bottleneck that area. I can't imagine, just looking at the footprint of the three-A Development District as it's presently constituted, that there could be any foot traffic that would be increased by adding residential uses, which would only lead to more restrictive parking and more, basically, encumbrances upon our school system. I don't see this as a benefit at all, I'd be opposed to it.
Thank you. Mr. Armstrong?
The two zones that are affected are the, are the town center district and the commercial district.
You need to either bend over or move it up, we can't hear you, Paul, sorry. It's really hard for a really tall man to do that, but...
It's, this, this, this change isn't for the three-A Design District, it's for the commercial district and the, and the town center district.
Do you understand that, Mr. Martin, it's not for the three-A Design District? What Mr. Armstrong's saying is it's for the town center district and the commercial district.
That would only shift the traffic problem away from my neighborhood to the residents that are on three-A and Summer Street. There is not a great deal of footprint there, and quite frankly, any increase in traffic due to residential, look at the parking areas there, try to go over to the, to the function center when the kids have a dance there, there is no parking over there. If you're gonna increase housing into that area, which does not have an accommodation for further parking, to an area that already only has little tiny footprints, I don't suggest you're gonna increase any, increase any foot traffic, I just would suggest you'll increase traffic.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Silva? At the request of Mr. Bouchard?
So, Jason Silva, in addition to being building inspector, zoning official, I also worked on the zoning subdivision committee on this, and, and worked specifically with this article. I think what's important to know about this article is it targets, as Paul pointed out, specific areas in town, two areas, town center district and commercial districts, one of which, and most of which are on the three-A corridor serviced by your sewer. Your existing sewer has an upgrade that's been approved by this body, and these properties that we've identified with this zoning article are affected by that sewer infrastructure. So you'd be basically fostering an article that you've already supported in the past, your sewer infrastructure improvements, creating opportunities along that corridor, specifically targeting, um, not just housing, but affordable housing, housing where people can live, work, play, and again, that matches, as Rob referenced earlier, your master plan, so, so this zoning article specifically matches Kingston's growth, Kingston's plans, and Kingston's prior approvals. I don't, uh, I don't think that this article would change or create any additional parking, any additional traffic issues, because you're dealing with existing lots, existing infrastructure. Yes, there may be a few apartments, but typically you're not looking at more than a few parking spaces. Many of the properties that we're targeting are underutilized, which means that the parking areas are just not full. So this article is not designed to create new economic development, but stimulate within the existing infrastructure, and create opportunities where you have many vacant or underutilized properties, so...
Yes, Mr. Haas?
John Haas, ninety-six Summer Street. There's been more than one conversation tonight about revenue in this town. There's undeveloped properties that are involved in this rezoning article, and by developing them, we would generate some tax revenue. The trade-off with that would be, as Jason said, a couple of parking spaces here and there. The traffic on three-A right now, I can't imagine doing a traffic study with any of this development and finding any significant difference whatsoever. So I am definitely in favor of this.
Seeing no further debate, ladies and gentlemen, the motion on Article seventeen cries a two-third majority vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna call that on a motion carries with a two-third majority on a voice vote. Moving on to Article... Why do I keep doing this? I just jumped to nineteen, yeah. Moving on to Article eighteen, Mr. Bouchard?
Move that the town amend the town of Kingston zoning bylaws by replacing the initial sentence of Section seven-point-seven-point-two-point-one as printed in the warrant, and further allow the sections be numbered in accordance with the reformatting as approved under Article sixteen of this warrant.
That being, do I have a second? Hearing that second, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Selectmen were favorable three-one-zero, Planning Board was favorable four-zero-zero. Uh, Mr. Bouchard?
I'd like to hear from Rob and Jason.
Okay, he's turning his time over to Mr. Downing, do you wanna go first?
So the point behind this article is to allow properties that can't be developed due to the dimensional requirements such as setbacks, frontage, and even though they don't fit to a T, they could be good spots for development, so it gives more flexibility in the, in the site.
Thank you. Mr. Silva, do you wanna address it, or is that straightforward? Okay. Ms. Stanford?
Janet Stanford, fifty-three Evergreen Street. So I attended a BOS meeting where Mr. Silva spoke about this, and he said that, um, sorry, I'm blanking out for a second, okay, he said that, um, you know, this would give the Planning Board and the Zoning Board authority to give special permits if a business or some kind of entity doesn't exactly match the, the bylaws that are in place right now. So I have a couple of points to make. One, you know, we have voted for these bylaws, these zoning bylaws, at town meetings just like tonight, and I, you know, there's a procedure in place already where they can go to ZBA and get a variance, and I'm a little bit concerned that if we just say, you know, you can just come into the Planning Board or go into the Zoning Board and ask for a special permit, you know, the doors are gonna be kind of wide open. Now, one of the points Mr. Silva made at the BOS meeting was, well, there'll be a public hearing. Well, I've attended many public hearings, and so haven't other people in this room, and we've voiced our opinion about things, and the boards, whichever board they were, they voted, they still voted against what we were saying. So just the fact that there's a public hearing does not guarantee that the special permit would not still be allowed. I also, you know, I watch Planning Board meetings, I've watched them for over a year, I've, I watch ZBA meetings occasionally, and what we have in place now, I think works very well. The Zoning Board, run by Chairman Paul Downing, he does a very good job of adhering to rules, you know, and there is a thing in place where you can ask for a variance. So I'm really against this, I think it gives way too much power and too much leeway to the Planning Board to be able to just let things through that really shouldn't go through. And my last statement is, I'm also concerned that, you know, Business A comes to the Planning Board and they say, oh, we don't really meet the requirements, but, you know, for these reasons, please give us a special permit, and the Planning Board says, okay, you have your special permit. Then Business B comes two weeks later, and they have a request, and then the Planning Board says no to them. So that's very subjective to me. I'd rather just have people just stick with the bylaws that are in place now, it makes it fair, it makes it equitable to everybody, it's not subjective, and that's how I'd like to keep it.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Good evening again, Michael Martin, eighteen Prospect Court. Our bylaws are our shield, we have a system of checks and balances, and yes, we have elected officials, but we have a mechanism in place for people to apply to these boards if they see fit. If you allow this to go through, it'll be subjectivity, you will not get uniformity of application, and we will whittle away at the protections that we went at great lengths to, to get the bylaws that were put in place. Now, they're sitting there saying that it's a little bit of this and a little bit of that, but you would be shocked at how many times that, look, look at the marijuana vote that we just had not too long ago, it was like ten feet between a church and an ultimate disposition, and it was the bylaw, it was that hard and fast bylaw, the protection that the good citizens took a long time to create for us, that we would be willingly just passing along. If we vote no on this, this doesn't shut the door for people, people could still go through the process, but it ensures a uniformity of application, and it would be have to be something that people have to see while protecting all of us with the bylaws that everyone fought so hard to put in place, and or just to vote no.
Thank you.
Dave Cowing, eight Mayflower Street. I'm gonna urge everybody to vote no on this zoning bylaw change, and just to be clear, this, this, the language that's being replaced here is a, is a nice, long list of special permit requirements, and those are being replaced, and kind of echoing what the previous speakers have said, that's gonna leave us in a situation where it's ultimately gonna be, you know, completely up to the Planning Board and what they, you know, they deem that it's of high standards, but I mean, you know, what does that mean? My high standards, you know, completely different from, you know, some of the Planning Board members perhaps, or, you know, down the road, different Planning Board members come in, you know, what are their high standards? I mean, looking at this, you know, looking at the list of the languages that's being replaced here, I mean, it's things we can all pretty much, you know, we can't really argue with, you know, the use as developed and operated will not adversely affect the neighborhood, the developed facilities adequately provide for, you know, all proposed operations of use, you know, it won't conflict with traffic, you know, the nature of the surrounding areas impacts, you know, I think that's some pretty good language in there that kind of serves the purpose of a special permit, which is to make sure that, you know, the proposed building or use that's going in there isn't gonna impact those, you know, neighbors, so I'm gonna urge everybody to vote no.
Thank you. Mr. Randall?
Justin, Brad Randall, just expanding on what Mr. Martin and Mr. Cowing said so gracefully, Article eighteen would be taking away, in my opinion, the power from town meeting. When there's a controversial issue, hundreds of people show up, and we have the power to change our bylaws if need be. I just believe we have a town meeting form of government, and that type of power should really rest with the body that we entrust to make decisions for our town, and that's all of us. So I would agree with the previous speakers, a hundred percent.
Thank you. Sir?
Twenty-four Summer Street, Nay Reese, I am in favor of this article, indifferent from the other speakers, so, so I actually have an example where this would help me out tremendously. The special permit process already exists, so you can apply for special permits as it is right now, but I'm unallowed to, you know, apply for a special permit because of, I can't even get my foot on the door to present it to the committee, and, you know, really what it, I think the crux of here is, you know, it's not to violate the intent of the zoning bylaw, so you're gonna be presenting a plan, and they're still gonna have to use their authority, just like they would now, but it allows us to get our foot into the door to where we can actually present our case, and it, it's still gonna get presented to all the surrounding residents and everything, and so I don't see it as a huge problem, we're talking about the master plan, development of Kingston, we don't want it to be stagnant, we need to develop this land, we need to increase tax revenue by allowing this kind of special permitting, if my property value goes up because I wanna build a second property on my land, my value's gonna go up, yours is gonna, and, you know, in theory, taxes are gonna go down for yours, stay, you know, not increase as fast, so I think if you're a fan of like not having high taxes going through the roof, and to put money in the pockets, pockets of your residents, like myself, who's just not a big developer, just someone that wants to put a, a house on their, you know, on their land, I, I think it's a good thing to do. I mean, right now in the zoning bylaw of my zone, I need five acres of land to put a second property on, which I think is super antiquated, and like, who has five acres here? Not a lot of people, so I just think it, it really affords you the opportunity to, to, I guess, get with the times and just kind of like move forward, 'cause we wanna grow Kingston to a better place and not be stagnant and left, I don't know, in the wayside of the surrounding towns that are developing, like Plymouth and the other areas, so that's, that's all I'd say.
Thank you. Ms. Stanford, second bite?
Yep, I just wanna add one more comment. Yep, I just wanna add one more comment. Um, you know, anything that goes through, if this goes through, and someone goes to the Planning Board and they get a special permit to build something that not, wouldn't ordinarily be able to be built, you know, what, that one decision, that's gonna last forever. That will be grandfathered in, you know, so I think that's very dangerous, because, you know, a mistake could be made, and then we're gonna be stuck with something for God knows how long. So I think this is really just a bad idea, and I still urge you to vote no.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Mastropolo, 103 Ponvy Drive. I just wanted to clarify, because I don't have the current, um, zoning provisions in front of me, but it's my understanding, we're just replacing the first sentence of that bylaw, right? It's, the subsections will still remain, because I think the gentleman, a couple of speakers back, thought that those subsections would be removed, and they're, I think they're extremely important, but my understanding is that they will still remain, just, there would just be more, um, common sense wiggle room.
Mr. Silva?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further debate? Yes, Mr. Silva, you want one more?
May I rebut to some of the statements?
All right, but quickly, please?
Yeah, I, I, I think, uh, first of all, I appreciate all the things that are, that are made comments on. And, and I think that's very important. This is part of the, the, the great thing about hearing what you have to say is that, that I can hopefully, um, explain to you a few things. That none of the conditions of the zoning bylaw change, that no prescriptive elements, dimensional changes, there is no changes. So that if I were to bring to this body some change to the bylaw, any of the other things, like changing the zones in your area, going from 20,000 to 25, all these things would have major impacts, this does not have that essence of major impact. What it does is create opportunity for the town of Kingston, opportunity on properties that are in the exact same areas that we spoke about on the previous article, the Town Center District, commercial districts, that are underutilized, that can't do anything because those dimensional orientations restrict them, and the properties remain vacant. With this change, it would allow for the petitioner to ask, not to get any approvals, but to ask. And it could be your house, there could be a business, it could be any of the two. It is not orientated towards a specific developer or, or anyone. It is created for opportunity for the town of Kingston. So I hear a lot of concerns, a lot of fears, a lot of anecdotes about what if, or what, what could happen, but this change doesn't make anything changed in a large sense. It just, again, creates opportunity for people to ask those questions. So...
Can you round that, can you summarize that up now, close up?
These kinds of anecdotes or fears would be the things that you'd wanna bring forward in the petition at a public hearing in front of the Planning Board or the Zoning Board. And so I'd ask if you want things to, to move forward in the economic development, I'd say this would be a great opportunity, and that's why we brought it forward to you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Cowing?
Uh, just a question clarification. Um, if I'm wrong, I apologize, but I mean, the first, you know, the first sentence, it's one long sentence here, and it ends in a colon, so, and then the, then there's the list of all those conditions that need to be met, so I don't know if that's something Town Council, or if there's, you know, an English teacher, someone, an expert in grammar and syntax that could speak to that. I always thought that that just kinda was one, you know, long thought, and here's all the, all the criteria that fall under that first initial sentence, so I wouldn't want down the road, you know, somebody comes along and just says, "Oh yeah, well, that's all part of that. That's all been replaced." So just if we could get a clarification.
Good point. Hold tight.
Madam Moderator, a quick, a quick point, if I may?
Uh, yeah, what would you... Well, we'll let Town Council move it. You, go ahead.
The only point I would make is if it wasn't significant, they wouldn't be looking to move it here tonight. If it wasn't significant, there wouldn't be a need to move it here tonight. And the fact is, when you read the description that they put down there, it is to allow greater flexibility to the special permit and granting authoritative decision petitions, which means that they are trying to circumvent our bylaws. It is significant. Don't buy the sales pitch.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Um, ladies and gentlemen, um, Counsel?
Um, the, I think the question is a, a valid one. I'd say that it's ambiguous at, at best, but it does appear to, I don't, what I don't see with the change, unfortunately, is something where it does allow incorporation of the A through I there, because the, the way it's structured right now, it says, "And the following are met." If it, if the language "and the following are met" was attached after the words zoning bylaw at the end of the new sentence, I think it would accomplish what Mr. Silva had suggested. But that, that is not in place now, so I would, I would share that concern.
Okay, Mr. Cowing, if you can come back to the, 'cause we're now back to your question. And Counsel's indicating, and are you saying at the end of, um, the first sentence? So where it says the...
The, the, the key to it now is that under 7.721, it says, "And the following are met." There's no, which leads into the A through I requirements. There's none of that language here. It, it could be added easily by just saying, comma, "And the following are met."
And what I'm saying is, where are you adding that comma? That's what I'm just trying to say at the very...
It'd be at the end of...
I know, right here, right here?
No.
That's what I thought, okay. Somebody just said at the colon. That's what I wanted to say, at the end, right?
After the word zoning bylaw.
Okay. I see what you're saying. So, Mr. Cowing, I guess, uh, my question to you is, um, now that you've heard from Counsel, are you, um, accepting that answer, or are you going to be making a motion to amend?
No, I just, I would say, what's the point? I mean, if, if you have to add on "and the following are met", you still have this long list of, you know, difficult burdens to, to me, so what's the point? You know, why, why make a change if you still have to, you know, it gives, you know, the article as written says, you know, it gives them the discretion to make the change, or, you know, approve, if, approve the permit if they see fit, but the following must be met, you know, A through I, complicated, you know, a lot of, you know, pieces that they have to accommodate, so what's the point? I say just vote no, keep it how it is.
Thank you, Mr. Cowing. Um, ma'am?
Carol Bosse, 29 Wapping Road. I'd like to urge people to vote no. Uh, my own experience has been, I've seen two cases where just the request to make a change was enough that a bylaw was, in my estimation, bypassed and abrogated, because a request was made, and it was granted. And I think that it was deleterious to the town's standing, and that those are by, that's a very important bylaw that should not have been bypassed, in one case. In another case, uh, where the state came in uh, through the Department of Transportation, there was a public hearing, uh, where a, a great many people showed up and had a great many things to say, at the end of which we were told in no uncertain terms that nothing said at that hearing by any of the citizens would alter the decision which had been made before the hearing took place. This had to do with the Elm Street Bridge. And so two, those are two cases that I've personally seen where that kind of flexibility, and I, and I'm using a nice word for flexibility, has caused the citizens', uh, bylaws and the citizens' wishes to be discounted, and I don't wanna see that go on happening more. So I would like people to vote no on this to sustain the firmness of our bylaws. I think we need to stand by them.
Thank you. Mr. Um, Harlow, and then Mr. Keating?
Daniel Harlow, 31 Howland Lane. Does, if this is approved, does this remove the necessity for variances? Is, is, I, I'm just trying to, I guess, get a, a, a grasp of what it, of what it is, 'cause it seems like it's offering more flexibility, but still has to follow certain guidelines. But is it to, to prevent the necessity of variances where hardships have to be proven?
Um, Counsel?
So let, let me answer in Jason Kefillin, 'cause Jason and I discussed this. This only applies if you're already before the Planning Board for a special permit. So this isn't just carte blanche, someone who wants to put on a new deck of their house can go apply for a special permit rather than getting a variance. You have to already be before the Planning Board for a special permit, and then they could employ th- these procedures so you don't have to get a variance. So that this does make it easier to get dimensional relief, but only if you're already before the Planning Board for some other type of special permit.
When you say already in front of the Board, do you mean currently in front of the Planning Board? Or in the future, if you're in front of the Planning Board, and you don't meet dimensional requirements?
It's prospective in the future.
Okay. So variances will still, the, the necessity to apply for variances will still exist on, if you were gonna go through the Zoning Board, but if you were to go to the Planning Board first, variances don't?
No, you have to be, you have to be applying for a special permit that is, already exists in the, or that exists under the bylaw itself to take advantage of this.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Keating?
Jeffrey Keating, 4 Chris Millane. Move the question.
Okay, I have a second on the move the question. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with minimal opposition. Ladies and gentlemen, now on the motion, on Article 18, two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Count, we're gonna count it. I think it was a 50-50, to be honest with you, if I had a, if I had a bet in. What happened to my green card? Sorry, I lost my green card. All those in favor of the motion on Article... I just said it too. Article 18, lime cod in the air, please. All those in favor of the motion? Mr. Dalton? 13, 1-3? Uh, Ms. Joyce? Ms. Joyce is 10. Mr. Armstrong? Mr. Armstrong is 16. Ladies and gentlemen, all those in opposition, lime cards in the air. Mr. Dalton? Mr. Dalton is 28. Uh, Ms. Joyce? Ms. Joyce is 25. Uh, Mr. Armstrong? Mr. Armstrong is 11. Ladies and gentlemen, the motion does not carry with 64 in opposition and 39 in favor. Um, ladies and gentlemen, I've been informed that, um, Article 19 will not be moved. No motion will be made. So moving on to Article 20. Article 20 is Mr. Warren. Uh, well, our last vote was 64 and 39. It's late, 103 on the last vote. Will you accept that? Are you gonna call for a count? Can't hear you. Somebody? They're not voters. That was with a, um, uh, um, other people.
There's not only one article.
I'm just asking. Uh, the last vote was 103, um, votes, so do you want me to call it? 'Cause you have the right to call a count. I just have to count it. Count it. And who's that calling that? Thank you, Ms. Altier. So, Mr. Armstrong, Mr. Dalton, Ms. Joyce. Just count people. All right, never mind. I know, but Paul knows all the non-voters that are over there. So I guess all the, count, and I am a voter. Mr. Gallagher's a voter. Mr. Tallaman is not, so I'm gonna go to Ms. Joyce. We're in the middle. We'll go to Ms. Joyce. You take Finance Committee, you take Board of Selectmen. Um, Ms. Joyce has me and, um, Paul. Paul and I? Mr. Dalton, are you done? Okay, Mr. Dalton? Mr. Dalton is 41. Ms. Joyce? Ms. Joyce is 36. Mr. Armstrong? Mr. Armstrong is 27. Ladies and gentlemen, that's 104. We have a quorum. Article 20, Mr. Warren. Skin and my teeth, but we got it.
Move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant perpetual easements as printed in the warrant.
Having a second on that, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Selectmen voted favorable 4-0-0. Um, Mr. Warren, if you can address your motion?
Sure. Uh, this article will allow the town to grant an easement to allow access to a town-owned parcel of land for future development. Uh, this parcel abuts Colony Place in Plymouth. If everybody has the supplemental handout, there's, uh, there's a few images in there. And... Sorry, that's, that's it? I mean, there's, I can...
It was like Bugs Bunny, "That's it, folks." All right, so, any debate? Yep, I have Ms., I have Ms. Altier and, and Ms. Dubois.
I have several questions about this article, um, and it was on the annual town meeting warrant, and I don't see that we have any more information about it than we did then. And, um, it's a very confusing article, and I don't think any of the documents that we were given give us a really good idea of what we're trying to do here. I think the maps are terrible. I, I don't think people really understand the question. I, I do, because I've been looking into it, but, so I shouldn't speak for other people, but I would, I have several questions. Um, the first one is, when we grant an easement, aren't we granting it to some one or some entity? And it's no, it doesn't say who.
Turney Tallaman?
It's a matter of law, in a town meeting article, we can't, even if it's a specific developer in mind, we still have to follow procurement rules afterwards, so even though there's likely only one potential bidder here who could draw a benefit from the, from the easement, we still have to go through the process, so we can't specify that in this, in this particular article. We have to follow the procurement rules.
So we don't know who will benefit from this. I, we got this supplemental material, and it lists all these wonderful things it's gonna do for us. The conceptual plans of the proposed development say that, um, it's, we will get, there's, there will be the potential for over 750 jobs, and there's the potential for over a million dollars per year in real estate taxes. Well, that sounds great, doesn't it? That just sounds great. We all wanna reduce our taxes. But is there any, has anybody analyzed what the potential costs of this are? And before I would accept this, which would allow this development to move forward, I would wanna know those potential costs, and one of, one of the things, for example, is water and sewer. As far as I know, there's no water and sewer to that property, so who's gonna bear the burden of that? burden of that? What about the police and fire requirements? This is way down, to get to this property, if we grant the easement, you have to go through Colony Place to get to this property. So how, how are the town services gonna be provided down there? How's the fire department gonna get down there? What's it gonna cost? What about the highway department? It's a very ambiguous language as far as I'm concerned, about what, what the developer might have to do as far as the roadways. It says they'll build them and they'll take care of them, but does it actually include that, you know, who would do the snow removal, does that, is that included? I guess I'm asking a whole bunch of questions here, so I'll just shut up and see if somebody has some answers.
Well, I guess the question would be, as the Board of Selectmen considered the costs associated with everything that Mrs. Altier just indicated, which was water, sewer, police, fire, highway department, all of that, did you consider the cost of all of that when you proposed this article?
Sure, and if I may defer to our town administrator to answer, he can more than force him to do it.
Sure. So you step aside, let Mr. Coulter come up and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Madam Moderator. I think Sarah asked some great questions, let me see if I can give equally great answers. In two thousand seventeen, this town meeting overwhelmingly approved a zoning bylaw which allowed for mixed-use overlay district for the project that's currently being proposed. As, because town council said we shouldn't speak about the proponent, we won't, but I can speak about the project that's being proposed. It's a million-square-foot commercial professional park built to green energy standards. And it's, yes, a project that goes to, the exit and the entrance are through Colony Place, not Kingston roads, through Colony Place onto forty-four and to Route three. The town will not provide water, excuse me, sewage to this property. They will have to build their own sewage treatment plant. The town will not bring a water line to this facility. They would have to provide through the water commissioners their own water through wells, on-site wells. So there'd be no capital investment made to this project. Now, a question was asked, what's different between this and last time this was brought before town meeting? The answer is very simple. The opponents of this project circulated information about the developer's intent to make this a residential project. And we appreciated that information. So in this easement, this perpetual easement, we made it very, very clear that if this project is, is developed for residential use, the easement will be rescinded. We will only permit green, commercial, professional-centered development-type projects. Otherwise, the easement will be terminated. So no town water, no town sewage, no children in the schools, about a million dollars in commercial property taxes, and seven-hundred-and-fifty jobs.
Can you address the fire, police, and highway department for that area? Because we'd be, the other thing she raised is obviously, police covering the area, fire department getting there to fight fires, and the highway department plowing, maintaining the roads, costs.
Well, this would be a, it would be a private development. The town would not be responsible for plowing or for maintaining the roads. The fire department would respond to that fire through, from its Smiths Lane Fire Department, which as the crow flies, is a very short distance. In terms of police responses to doctors' offices and lawyers' offices and architectural offices, they would respond as they would to any other commercial building or commercial business in town.
So would there be a position, and again, I'm just folding up on Mrs. Altier, because we've had this in regard to you saying there'll be private development, private, private roads, so that's why the highway department won't maintain them?
That's correct.
But then will we be in a position like we are at Indian Pond where private roads are gonna become public because it's the way to which the public has access, and then we get it? I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
On that side?
If, I wouldn't pretend to answer for Mr. Bazler, even though he's not here this evening, but if they go through...
Jay Tallaman's saying the answer's no.
Property engineering design, that would be...
Yeah.
Unless they do a subdivision...
Exactly right.
Then the answer would be no, they would have to subdivide the property and create recordable roads. That is not the proposal as, as we viewed it.
Okay, now my last one, just to follow up on Mrs. Altier as well, is, now, Mr. Coulter, you've indicated that in here, that if there was residential, the easement would be voided or whatever. Is that in the easement, that there'll be no residential?
It's in the warrant article.
I just didn't read it quickly, I was going back in to see if I could read it very quickly to, but I was busy with that. It says it right in it, no residential.
Madam Moderator, it was based upon the last-minute opposition, based upon misinformation, that we modified the easement. The developer has no interest in residential property, and we codified that in the easement so that if he sells the project or changes his mind, we can terminate the easement. And we would.
Great, thank you. I think, Ms. Altier, did that answer all your questions?
Not all of them.
Okay, but your time's getting close to being up, so you need to wrap it up, though, but go ahead.
How, how is this guaranteed us? We don't know who the developer is, we don't know who owns the land.
Right, but, but council said we can't grant an easement in town meeting to a specific developer, it has to go out to procurement. So other developers could come up and ask as well.
Let me, let me be clear, though. I think, all I'm saying is, we can't list it in the warrant article. I think we know who the proponent of this project is, and we know what they want to propose, and there's drawings and negotiations and all that. As a matter of law, we cannot grant any, this body cannot grant an easement to a specific person, but it's no mystery as to who they are, just as, and the requirement here is very express as to no residential use, so that's...
It is a mystery who they are. But in any case, whoever it is, why do we vote for this before we, the public, see that this is true, that it's gonna be privately owned and they're gonna privately build their own well? I think we should wait. I was expecting this to come at next town meeting, not at a special town meeting, and I didn't have any time to really talk to a lot of people and find out what this is about. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, briefly.
Yeah, very briefly, this is not a, a request for a project approved, project approved, approval. This is a request for an easement. In the absence of getting that easement, no developer moves forward because the land is lean locked, landlocked. This is just to gain access. It's a checkmark for any developer that bids on this. Without access, the land is, is unbuildable.
Thank you, Mr. Haas.
John Haas, ninety-six Summer Street. To add to what Tom said, there will be no retail there either.
Yes, thank you, John.
So it's no residential, no retail, so we don't get the negative impact on any retail that might be developed in Kingston. Once again, this, as he said, Tom said, this is not for an approval of a project. Everybody in this room, everybody in this town is gonna have a chance to listen to the story, they're gonna have to go through the planning board, they're gonna have to go through approvals, they're gonna have to tell us what they're gonna do, everybody's gonna see what it is. One more time, from the last conversation I had at the mic, it's about revenue, it's about taxes, it's about jobs, it's about development, and that means business development as well as just growth for the town. So totally, strongly advocate support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Sir? I don't know.
Thank you. Look at it.
Now, Mr. Dubois, I had you queued up way ago, so if you want to step forward, Ms. Dubois?
Oh, that's okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
I, I don't have a lot to say, except...
How about your name?
Gary Langenbach, one sixty-four Elm Street, Madam Moderator. I don't have a lot to say, except I, I see conceptual grandiose plans and no definitive No water, no sewer. There's two vernal pools right in the middle of that project, by the way, or potential vernal pools. I don't see them in the conceptual plan. That might make a difference. And basically, the develop, developer, you could make an agreement with him, I don't know how binding it is, it's like a deed restriction, and gets to get renewed. Suppose halfway through a project that's approved, he stops, because this, this is an overlay, it's not just, it, it is also zoned R forty and R eighty. I'm very concerned that school buses will have to go through a, you know, a shopping development to get there, and it's probably a good mile to do so. You have to go into Plymouth and then go back into Kingston. I, I'm just not concerned, I'm, I'm, I'm not convinced that this language is going to hold them to the development they propose with all conceptual designs. Suppose, you know, they do violate the agreement, how do you stop them from using this easement when they paid for the roads to get in there? I just see a nightmare happening, happening, unless we see better development plans.
You need to wrap that up, thank you. Ms. Dubois?
Thank you, Pine Dubois, ninety-three Elm Street. I, I want to talk about why I have a problem with this, and I think that our objection, so-called, to the previous articles is, is mischaracterized. It wasn't just about residential development, it was about the impact of development on this particular parcel of land next to three hundred acres of land that has been purchased because it is a globally rare habitat. So the hotel is great because it'll bring ecotourists, tourists from everywhere in the world, but it won't be great if you use so much water and put so much sewage in the ground that you contaminate and destroy the rest of that, the ecosystem in the property. That's what we're worried about. We're not worried about, I would love to know who the developer is, and I'm gonna ask you right now, who is the developer?
Who's developer? Mr. Coulter?
We would have to put the land out to lease. This proponent is by Commerce Development. The same people that built Colony Place.
So, so the people in Plymouth who built Colony Place would, would develop this? That helps me because...
If they were the winning bidder.
Okay. So, so when I went out to Colony Place during the drought last year at noon, and I see water being scattered all over the place for their one-foot strip of sidewalk, that is the kind of management that I'm looking at as what is coming forward. Then they clear-cut one of the last pieces of Pine Barren in the South Shore, one of the last pieces of Pine Barren, a globally rare ecosystem in Kingston. For, for what is what we're asking? We're not opposed to any and all development. We're opposed to the kind of development that says the most important thing is for us to think we're gonna get a million dollars a year out of this. What I want to know is, we're get, we have a developer who is going to uphold the highest standard of development here, that is gonna give us a globally rare development here to match our globally rare ecosystem that, that people have spent thirty-five years getting into a position and finally protected. They're working with the Northeast Wilderness Trust, who owns the three hundred acres, they're working with the Audubon and the Mash, the Herring Pond Wampanoags in terms of setting up an educational center for globally rare conservation species. We have, let me read it to you because I'll mess it up if I don't. Muddy Pond's New England bonsai colony is known to be the largest colony of rare flower, this rare flower species left on earth. That's what we're talking about. And this development will be seen from Muddy Pond. You will see what? You will see maybe the sewer plant. You will see what? Maybe them irrigating so Muddy Pond doesn't have any water in it. The significance of Muddy Pond is that it is coastal plain pond. All of its water comes from the ground, there's no stream running into it, there's no tributary, no river. It's part of the Plymouth Harbor aquifer. That is where our Indian Pond well is. These guys have land that is protecting our Indian Pond well.
You can start wrapping it up, Pine, please.
So my point is, without the knowledge of what's happening, we give away our last card, then it's up to them, and I don't think that's right or fair, and I'm opposed to it.
Thank you, and I apologize to everybody, when Pine started, I forgot to stop my stopwatch, and then I started it late. So, Mr. Coulter, I'll come back to you in a minute, sir over here.
Russ Boydlow, fourteen Warf Lane. I have two questions. The first one is, do we have permission from Plymouth? I understand that we have to access through Plymouth to this piece of property. Have we spoken to those people and they've said, yes, they'll allow us to do that?
Mr. Coulter, can you address that?
Access through Plymouth would be in public roads. We wouldn't need permission from Plymouth to traverse those roads.
Okay, and then is another, on a utility basis, how about plowing? I know that the town's plowing private roads now, would we be plowing over there for them?
The answer to that right now, not having seen any plans or any specs, would be no. Madam Moderator, the comment I was about to make would be appropriate right now.
That's fine. Do you mind holding one second?
Not at all.
Mr. Will?
Not at all.
Not you, him. He's gonna hold for you, so that's why I'm asking him. Hold one minute, let Mr. Coulter address that, and then I'll come right back to you, please.
The vote here is on an easement. They would allow a project developer who would win a bid for leasing this land to move forward with site plans, design, and the like. Those plans would go before your water commissioners, would go before your planning board, would go before your conservation committee, would go before town meeting. We don't have those answers because we don't even have a developer. Town meeting three years ago, in its wisdom, approved this overlay district because this project is unique in so many ways. It doesn't bring traffic through Kingston, we don't have to provide sewage, we're not gonna build a water line, there'll be no retail, it'll be built to green specs. If they don't do what we asked them to do with respect to it being a commercial property, we withdraw this easement, this easement right. These questions are all very good questions, and I really appreciate Pine's passion and the work she's done. But that's not the purpose of this article. This article is, do we approve an easement that lets us get to the next step so we can ask and answer those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter, back to you, sir?
That's, I'm good, thank you.
You got yours?
Hanson, ninety-nine Monceal Road, I move the question.
And I'm sorry, who was that?
Thank you. I'm, 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 sir? A-N-D-S-E-N, Water Commissioner.
Thank you. So ladies and gentlemen, I have the move a second, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a move the question, do I have a second? All those in favor of moving the question say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, on, on the motion on Article twenty, provides a two-thirds majority vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I'm gonna count it, I know my counters are already getting up. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor of Article twenty, raise your lime card. Oh, no, I didn't even hear that, I only heard easement. Mr. Dalton?
Twenty-five.
Mr. Dalton, twenty-five, Mr. Ms. Joyce?
Twenty-four.
Ms. Joyce is twenty-four, Mr. Armstrong?
Fifteen.
Mr. Armstrong's fifteen. Ladies and gentlemen, all those in opposition to the motion on Article twenty, lime card. Mr. Dalton?
Twenty.
Mr. Dalton is fourteen, Mr. Armstrong? I mean, Ms. Joyce?
Thirteen.
Ms. Joyce is thirteen, Mr. Armstrong?
Eight.
Eight? So it doesn't carry my count, right? No, it's too late, once the vote's taken, you can't go back on a quorum, because people can abstain from voting. Votes are not always, people can abstain. So ladies and gentlemen, we have sixty-four in favor, thirty-five in opposition, it is not a two-thirds majority vote. So the motion does not carry. Because it's thirty-five times two, right? That gives you seventy, and it has to be...
Reconsider or reopen the discussion?
We don't have that motion.
I'm sorry, I can't even hear you. You're, it's not on a microphone. No, you're fine, he just needs to turn you on.
Is it? You hear me now?
Very well.
This is for Mr. Coulter, I have an after-vote comment question, and that is...
Oh, these aren't questions, this isn't a time you get to just ask questions, so do you have a point of order?
I just have one question, and it's simple. Plimpton has, in my opinion, a commerce center similar to this commerce center that it's in.
It's not part of this meeting, sir. So that's just, you can raise it, go to a selectman reading, send an email to Mr. Coulter, it's not, that's not relevant to right now. The question that I have is, is that ladies and gentlemen, on Article twenty-one, there'll be no motion in Article... Oh, you're objecting, you are moving?
Yes, I'm moving.
Okay, I was just advised it was not being moved, so I apologize for that.
Just to move it and then to continue to the next meeting.
You can't.
Let me just put it on next town meeting?
You'd have to refile for next town meeting as a petition article, right? You can't move it, there's no... If you lay it on the table, the minute town meeting ends, it closes, and if you, there's no real, like, continuance to move it to another town meeting, there's no vehicle for it. Yeah. But I get what you're saying, so, yeah.
Can I make a point of order before we...
Well, I'm gonna just, yeah, but I have a...
Madam Moderator.
An Article twenty-two...
Point of order. On this last one, is there any motion to reconsider, recount, anything?
Reconsideration no longer exists.
Reopen the discussion?
No reopen, no rescind, no nothing.
Okay, thank you.
We got nada. And on Article twenty-two, the petitioners are pleased by the support received from the Board of Selectmen and Conservation Commission, and look forward to working with them to bring an article in the spring asking the town to protect the parcels known as Offal Pits for conservation purposes and passive recreation for all town residents. That's Article twenty-two, they're not moving. So ladies and gentlemen, I'll accept a motion to close, and a point of order from Town Council, I mean, from Town Clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, it's not very often that I wouldn't be the first one to say, let's get the heck out of here, but I would like to make one quick point before we all do go. This very well could be Janet's last meeting, as she said she was not gonna run for reelection. So I just wanted to say personally, and I hope for the rest of us, it's been my honor and my pleasure to serve with you, you have been fair, you have been patient, you have been honest, you've been scrupulous, and you have protected the minority. So thank you very much for the service that you gave to us.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. That was awesome, thank you. So ladies and gentlemen, do I have a motion? Motion to adjourn, and that is seconded, is the time, ladies and gentlemen, is ten fifty-four.